I think we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work Study Session in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. The time is now, I believe, 4:07 PM. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Item number two is called to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for items listed under Section 3 Issue Review Session Items and Section 5 Committee of the Poll Items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Let's see, I've got a few comment cards here, so I'll go ahead and you want to do the ones that I have in my hand physically, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
All right. Want to make sure I'm staying right with my city clerk. So, Kendon, it looks like you are up first. Please come down and state your name, place of residence, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
So, thank you for having me here. My name is Kendon Young, and I would like to speak on items 3A and 3C. So, if 3A is up, then... Oh, well, oh, shoot, okay. So, with that said, for 3A, the greenhouse gas inventory, Tempe has taken great pride in making data-informed decisions. As you'll see in the presentation for this, there's been no substantial decrease in greenhouse gas emissions since 2015, including the COVID lockdown. With that, further in the report, the community emissions are 90% greater than municipal emissions, and the wedge analysis shows that 100% renewable energy is critical for flattening projected growth of greenhouse gas emissions by 2050, and the wedge analysis also shows that EVs are critical for, while also reducing vehicle mile traveled, which is vital to reducing greenhouse gas emissions beyond flattening that curve. So, I'm very, I'm happy that the council has requested these acceleration items to be able to see with great insight into the road we have yet to take and to be able to answer the IPCC's 2030 goal. So, with that, thank you for reviewing the acceleration models. With my remaining minute thirty on item 3C, I enthusiastically support the fiscal 2022-23 budget and ask city council to fully fund all Sustainability, Office of Sustainability and Resilience General Fund Supplemental Requests and CIP operating impacts that are budget line items, and here's why. Climate action is a public priority. The community cares about climate action, and the most recent surveys from the People's Budget Tempe Survey, as well as the Tempe's Budget Survey, the majority of them say that climate action is important to them. Second, climate action is collaborative. We have made good on our January 26 promise that the Climate Action Asks will be distributed across the entire government. You'll notice that many of the climate action-related items are jointly submitted with seven other departments, and I am thrilled that we, as a city, are embracing climate action work, and that is reflected in what you see before you. And lastly, climate action is critical. This, the council has not consistently or equitably supported climate action budget requests in the past, and I'm grateful that this council has acknowledged this past by requesting the acceleration budget models. So, with the wedge analysis, we have a roadmap forward. You have a budget that takes action on these areas, and I want to thank you for your leadership that will sustain Tempe's commitment and leadership of other Valley cities. So, thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Next card I have here is for Jake Swanson. Please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the city council.
Hello. My name is Jake Swanson. I am a Tempe resident, have been for a while, pretty proud of it. How are you guys doing?
Awesome.
That's good to hear. I'm here for line item 3C as well. My name is Jake Swanson. I'm a resident in Tempe, and I'm a pretty big fan of our city. I'm proud of the innovativeness of our city and urge you to continue to be innovative. I believe continued innovation and leadership includes fully supporting the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget of the Sustainability and Resilience Office, both independently and jointly submitted, the General Fund Supplemental Requests and CIP operating impacts, budget line items. I'm proud of my city, and through that pride, I encourage you to continue to be leaders in this space. The concepts of alternative energies, community resilience, further sustainability development aren't going anywhere. We can be early to the party and innovators, part of the crowd, or late to the party, and I can guarantee being early to the party will reap the greatest benefits for us as a city, for you as leaders, and for our citizens. It is an investment in our future, and I don't know if you read their plans for the budget, but holy cow, it's pretty specific, intentional, and continues the work that we've already begun as a city of Tempe. I ask you to please fully support the Sustainability and Resilience Office as an investment, not a cost. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Next up, we have, and I might, if I get this wrong, I apologize, Selena Tachita. Please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the city council.
Thank you. My name is Selena Tachita. I am a white, financially stable, longtime resident and homeowner in the city of Tempe. I do not depend on or personally use human or social services that the city provides, and I share this because while I almost in no ways share their perspectives, I share many of the identities of the majority of people you've heard from this year in regards to budgets and priorities. People like me tend to love police, feel protected by police. We want to protect our property, right? This year, the reinvestment roundtable expanded the diversity of voices and perspectives in council's ear as we enter the operating budget process. They increased participation in the online budget forum and engaged over 400 people through the People's Budget Survey. You've seen their report. If you want to move toward equity, if you want to maintain a diversity of voices in this room, you need to listen to their suggestions and demands and vote against some of the CFO's recommendations this year. Do not unfreeze and introduce nineteen new police officers to our city, badged or unbadged. We need to reduce, not increase, the scope of police. Cut this police overhire program. Attrition can and should be planned for in all city departments, and they shouldn't need another half million dollars to do that. Invest in all requested mental health crisis response positions, all of them. Invest in all positions related to sustainability programs. That's a department that is severely understaffed with great ideas but not enough people to carry them out. Also, a note on community policing. I say as a PhD candidate in community development at ASU, community policing is not some kind of promising innovative take. It was attempted in the 90s, has not led to a reduction in overpolicing of BIPOC poor and specifically unsheltered communities. What we will end up with is collusion between the police department and neighbors who are already predisposed to trust and want to work with police, turning them into neighborhood vigilantes to watch rather than look out for their neighbors. If you really want to invest in community safety, invest in non-police first response and other programs that get the residents of Tempe what they need to be healthy and safe. Sorry, I'm speaking quickly, but I got a lot to say in three minutes. Now, I understand that you're between a rock and a hard place here, particularly in a non-district council. Each and every one of you is responsible for representing both people who are calling for reinvestment and people who think that police is pretty much the only thing the city should be investing in. I urge you to read through the comments that folks have made. As I did, I read through the online forum comments, and I was listening to the tone of the different comments. I was listening to the kind of dehumanizing and violent language that's used by people who are demanding more cops. The kind of language that they use specifically around unsheltered people is really offensive and disheartening. And then look at the compassion and love that undergirds demands for human services, which feels better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next card I have is for Phoenix Nelson. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the city council.
Hi, my name is Phoenix Nelson, and I'm a resident of Tempe. The Public Safety Task Force recommendations highlight the need to invest in specialized professional care for people experiencing mental health and other crises. The city has invested in a few positions, but the city manager's office is currently not recommending the addition of a crisis intervention specialist this budget season. Meanwhile, recommended for funding are nineteen unbadged unarmed community responders and another nineteen for the next year to respond to nonviolent calls for service. We don't need unmarked cops in our communities. We need specialized professionals who don't threaten arrest. The Public Safety Task Force recommendations specifically recommend improving the ability of 911 dispatch to identify and route calls that are best handled by dedicated non-police crisis response teams such as CARE7 and/or CRN or Salarri. A request has been made for a staff position to take on this role and also train others in dispatch, but it is not currently recommended for full funding. In the Tempe's Police Department's request for $2.5 million, they lament how they are being asked to do more with less. Let's ask them to do less instead of giving them more money. I'm glad to see the recommendation to fund the CARE7 crisis intervention specialist position, but we also need to invest in the specialists who provide professional support to people experiencing mental health crisis in Tempe. Invest in the only Tempe's Police Department request that hasn't been recommended by the city manager's office to fully fund the crisis response network to train dispatchers in Tempe to divert calls from officers to professional crisis response. We can fund both of these and then some by reducing the approved requests from the Tempe's Police Department by two positions. When the city of Tempe received CARE's ACT funds, they used a portion of it to create youth specialist positions. They have, there have been six professional social services counselors providing mental health support to nearly 500 middle school students during the pandemic, many of whom said services literally saved their lives. CARE's ACT funds for this program will expire next month, but the pandemic is not over, and trying to get back to business as usual is just more strain on us and our youth. Even when the pandemic is history, our young people deserve this kind of support. While a similar request for high school students is being recommended, this request for middle schoolers is not. They even secured an agreement with the school district to pay half, so they're only asking for less than $300,000. Council needs to fund this program, and they can take it from the expensive and unnecessary police overhire program. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Next card I have is Kim Gaffney Loza. Please come forward. State your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the city council.
Hi, I'm Kim Gaffney Loza. I'm a resident of Tempe, and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. First, I want to commend you all on your commitment to such a complex and difficult task as trying to determine how to stay within a budget and still fund everything necessary and desired by its citizenry. All requests that I have read have value and address needs and interests of subsegment of our population. My growing general concern right now, which I want to talk about, is not only for the city but also for our state, country, and the entire world, and that is global warming. Currently, I've signed up for a citizen science project monitoring the population and health of our Saguaro's in Maricopa County. Many of you have read or heard about how the outlook for cactus around the world will be impacted by a warming of our climate, which is something we would never have thought about. We associate cactus with deserts and warmer climates. The hotter-than-average temperatures of 2019 and 2020 have had a tragic impact on many of the large, older Saguaro's in our area. We are continuing to see the decline in their health. This is just one example of how our climate change is impacting our natural world. Then, of course, there is the impact on humans from heat and drought. Please continue having Tempe be a leader in finding and implementing ways to offset and slow down this warming, not only by its practices and investment, but also by its education of the public with relevant data. I urge you to consider as many of the sustainability issues as you are able to fund. I've also submitted a request list for North Tempe that you've probably read, as I always have one. I have a few more supports that I would like to make that I read on the supplemental requests that affect our area, and one is for a full-time landscape position for the water department. Currently, there is someone who's been working full-time but as a temporary part-time worker for over eight years. I do not believe this is fair. Knowing how committed and having demonstrated how responsible he is in this position, it would be a loss to the city if he moves on. On that note, as a former store manager, rewarding qualified and dedicated part-timers with full-time positions, whether it's in the parks department, the waste management department, whatever, with full-time benefits and a chance for advancement is a great way to increase retention. Finally, I am hoping that the request to increase the community responders means that we will have more patrols in the desert preserve with the ability to cite offenders such as dogs off-leash, dirt bikes, et cetera, in order to protect our preserve. I know I am only one of many asks, and I would add many more, but I know you will take everyone's asks into consideration and make the wise decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right. Now, I'm going to go to the WebEx speakers here. The first one I have is Sean Swisher. Please state your name and place of residence, and you have three minutes to address the city council.
Hello. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and council members, I'm here today to voice my support to fund all the Sustainability and Resilience Offices, General Fund Supplemental Requests, and CIP operating impacts in the proposed fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. As a Tempe resident with two small children and as a commissioner on the Sustainability and Resilience Commission, and like many other Tempeans, addressing climate change is of the utmost priority for me. The city council took important first steps in passing and recently updating the Climate Action Plan. Now, we must ensure that the cap is successful by fully funding the proposed request. The recent greenhouse gas emissions wedge analysis shows that it will take decisive action for Tempe to become carbon neutral, and a commitment to integrating dedicated personnel to take these tasks on is our way forward. The requests include positions to educate and engage with our community in equitable ways to have tangible results that improve the lives of our residents now and into the future. It is not a coincidence that there has been no substantial decrease in greenhouse gas emissions in Tempe since 2015. Few resources have been committed to the climate action-related performance measures that the council wishes to achieve. I am proud that our city is looking to take on big issues for real change, so we must embark on this challenge by funding the Sustainability and Resilience Offices recommended requests, and I also urge the council to fund the program's specialist positions for energy equity and green stormwater infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next person we have in the queue is David Sokolowski. You have three minutes to address the city council. Please state your name and place of residence.
Hi, my name is David Sokolowski. I live at 2323 College Avenue in Tempe. Tempe's wedge analysis doesn't seem to measure pollution from the production of electric vehicle. The city will reduce pollution in Tempe but increase mining pollution in other places. I believe in global equity and mining operations impacting indigenous communities. One example is the Paiyee Shoshone tribe, which is protesting a lithium mine in Thacker Pass. Arlan Melendez, the chair of the Reno Sparks Indian Colony, said, "Annihilating old-growth sage brush, indigenous people's medicine, food, and ceremonial grounds for electric vehicles isn't very climate-conscious." Another example is the Atacama Indigenous Council. They want to protect ecosystems in South America that are at risk from large-scale mining operations. The city should prioritize investment in transit shelters before car chargers. I know what it's like to wait for the bus in extreme heat, and it's natural to have anxiety because our health is at risk. Tempe has a goal to improve transit satisfaction by 2024, but due to budget cuts, the city reduced transit service. Our transit system needs your support in order to convince riders to come back. Please install our new transit shelters as fast as possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next speaker we have in WebEx is Vanessa DeCarlo. Please state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the city council.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Vanessa DeCarlo. My place of residence and work is Phoenix, Tempe, and Scottsdale. Hi, my name is Vanessa DeCarlo. I am an inclusion facilitator and educational specialist supporting equitable and accessible inclusive environments for disabled and neurodivergent communities. Within my role, I have been recognized as an expert within the Maricopa County Courts to evaluate the efficacy of supports, services, and programming for disabled and neurodivergent individuals. After reviewing reports from the Public Safety Task Force recommendations, peer-reviewed literature highlighting the negative effects of policing as a service provider, I strongly oppose unfreezing the nineteen police officer positions and overhire program. I recommend the council listen to the voices of Black, Brown, and directly impacted and disabled community and respond to their calls and not expand the size, scope of the police department. Furthermore, funding the nineteen unbadged unarmed community responders and another nineteen next year to respond to nonviolent calls for service cannot safely or effectively address the mental health needs of Black, Brown, disabled individuals. Policing as a service has shown negative outcomes related to mental health, physical health, and results in harmful effects for this community. When the city of Tempe receives CARE ACT funds, they use a portion of it to create youth specialist positions. There have been six professional social services counselors provided, providing mental health support to nearly 500 middle school students during the pandemic, many of whom said services literally saved their lives. CARE's ACT funds for this program will expire next month, but the pandemic is not over, and trying to get back to business as usual is just more strain on us and our youth. Even with, even when the pandemic is history, our young people deserve this kind of support. While a similar request for high school students is being recommended, this service for middle schoolers is not. Even with secured, even, they even secured an agreement with the school district to pay half, so they're only asking for less than $300,000. Council needs to fund this program. They can take it from the very expensive and unnecessary police overhire program. It is imperative that we need to fund mental health crisis response, mental health support for youth, and sustainability of our water, energy, and food access. As a person that trains folks to work with disabled youth and within schools, I strongly oppose any sort of action to try to turn policing into a mental health service. We have specific providers that have specialized training that can provide equitable and culturally sustaining programming, and we need to fund the service that matches the needs of the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have any more cards?
Mayor, that concludes the call to audience.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. So, just as a note too, before we get into the issue review session, I just want to let everyone know, at 5:30, if the work-study session hasn't concluded, we'll have to recess very quickly just to do the Housing Authority meeting, which is agendized for 5:30, but we will cross that bridge when we get there. But just wanted to make sure I let everyone know in the audience in case there's an abrupt pause. So, with that said, we'll go into item number three, which is the issue review session, and the first item on the agenda is community greenhouse gas inventory and accounting. And I believe we're going to have Brayden K., our Sustainability and Resilience Director, and Michael Steinoff of Kim Lundgren Associates, who are both going to be virtual this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Great to be with you this evening. So, we're here tonight to discuss our greenhouse gas emissions analysis and wedge analysis, which is an add, additional conversation onto the Climate Action Plan Update work that we've already come to you twice to talk about thus far. And so, next slide. So, this work is under for 18, our community carbon neutrality goal, to achieve a community carbon neutrality by 2050 with equitable outcomes. Next slide. So, as you know, we've come to you with the update. The original carbon analysis that we've done is we've done a greenhouse gas emissions analysis for our community in 2015 as well as in 2020. This allowed us to have an understanding of our emissions, where they come from in terms of energy, commercial, industrial, and residential, as well as our emissions from transportation sources, and we have seen a 16% reduction between our 2015 inventory and our 2020 inventory. What this important work that Grace Kelly and our office have led together helps us with is understanding of the big buckets of carbon reductions that we need to see in the coming decades. But what this doesn't do is give us a more detailed, evidence-based analysis of exactly which investments we should be making and to what level of investment we need to be making on an annual basis. And so, we brought on Kim Lundgren and Associates, a nationally-known climate firm, and Mike Steinhoff, who you'll hear from this evening, to get to that next level of evidence-based practice and of analysis. Next slide. So, this is what I just talked you through, the breakdown of what we've done so far. Next slide. And what this initial analysis allowed us to do was a general understanding of our work. So, on the right-hand side, you'll notice that's our original Climate Action Plan from 2019, and the four actions, highlight actions that are sustainably commissioned, recommended that we accelerate. And then on the left side, you see the three highlight actions. We combined two of them. So, these are things we're investing in now, resilient energy hubs and resilience hubs, transportation demand management, mobility. You heard from Engineering Transportation a few weeks ago on this, and then our continued investment in green codes and green stormwater infrastructure standards. These are policies that we're continuing from our first Climate Action Plan that we've reaffirmed in our Climate Action Plan Update and that you're seeing in the budget recommendations that we're making this year. Next slide. Now, to get to this next level of climate analysis, it's something called a wedge analysis. So, when you think of wedge, you obviously can think of golf and cheese and salad, but we also want you to think about carbon analysis when you think about wedge. And so, the next set of slides that you're going to be seeing from Mike are very common carbon analysis called the wedge analysis. You'll, Mike will explain why it's called that, and he'll walk you through the projections and the analysis that his, his firm has done over the last several months, and then I'll come back with some of the high-level recommendations coming out of KLA's work. And with that, Mike, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you, Brayden. And next slide, please. And thanks to the council for having me. So, the first step that we take in these types of analysis is start to build on all that work that Grace and the rest of the team in the Sustainability Office had put together and create what's known as the business-as-usual projection. So, imagine those columns that Brayden just showed and stretch them out over 50 years and looking at, you know, what's going to be happening with population growth, how many new residents, how many new jobs, and the associated buildings with those. If people are driving at the same rates that they drive now, what is that going to do to those emissions over time? And so, we, we start to pull that out as business-as-usual, but we'll start to bake in some other things. So, in this case, where we have represented in here has moved to 50% clean electricity up from about a 33% where we are today. But even with that dramatic change, we're still looking at a net growth of emissions, in fact, a 30% growth over where we are today. So, obviously, a lot more to do. Next slide. So, now we can continue to layer on additional factors that we might consider. So, what happens if the grid gets to 100% clean electricity? That still only leads to about an 11% reduction in greenhouse gases, so still well short of the city of Tempe's reduction targets. But that's all we can really count on for these kind of external factors that are going on, and really to be able to drive down emissions and do it significantly, a lot of local effort is going to be required. Next slide. So, what we looked at were a few different buckets of strategies and looked at sort of the level of effort that would be necessary to get to. In this case, we saw about an 89% reduction. Many places that are doing these kinds of analysis, the 2050 timeline is hard to pin down what it's going to look like, but we can at least see the, the scale of the action that's going to be necessary to, you know, get to seeing that, that level of reduction that we need. Next slide. So, this is where the term wedge analysis really comes into play. So, this is the inverse of the slide that we just saw, and this is demonstrating where those reductions will come from. So, if we start at the top, that top darkest orange bar is really that impact of moving to 100% clean electricity. So, that's what we can hope to get out of, you know, improvements to, to the grid. The next slide below that is what we could potentially get from energy efficiency in, in buildings. Following that, there's a couple different wedges for electric vehicles of local vehicles. The biggest blue wedge that you see there is actually commuters in and out of the city. And then the dark blue wedge there is for heavy-duty trucks. So looking at the schedule of when those things are coming on market, how those transition will happen as people make those choices, that's how much reduction we would expect to get out of those. And then the last one is what we could expect from a nominal amount of transitorian development. That's, you know, basically looking at some things that are already on books, not necessarily, you know, really what the full potential of those strategies could be. One last thing to note on the slide is that really that transitioning to 100% renewable undergirds a lot of this because you don't get the same reductions out of the building sector. You don't get those deep cuts from transportation if everything isn't running on clean electricity. Won't do any good to have EVs that are running on the grid that we have today. Next slide. So diving a little bit deeper into what are some of those local strategies? On the energy side, we looked at kind of the range of possibilities and, you know, looked at what was probably an aggressive but achievable level of reductions that you could achieve in the building stock in terms of efficiency. So a 20% reduction in energy use from residents and a 30% from commercial. And, you know, essentially spread that out over, over the time horizon to illustrate, you know, where you might be getting those reductions from. Really, it's up to the community now to think about, well, where do you want to actually invest those dollars? And, and maybe shifting some of those things around. So if achieving equity is a greater priority, maybe focusing more on that reductions within residences and targeting those residences that could most benefit from a reduction in energy burden is a good way to do good by your community while doing good for the planet. Also, I wanted to note that, you know, you get much more reductions if you do those investments early while the grid is still relatively dirty. So if you invest in efficiency in those communities that need it most in the near term, that's going to be your biggest pain for the buck. Next slide. So what is it going to take to get there? You know, achieving those kinds of levels of efficiency would require about a $200 million investment per year across all the buildings. Now, that's not just the city's paying that. There's lots of infrastructure money, lots of programs, federal programs that are set out to do this. And cities that are starting to climb up for this money, they're coming up with creative ways to do it. I'm figuring out, you know, how do we package the efficiency monies that are coming from Department of Energy programs and Housing and Human Services and, and bundling those together to really get those targeted investments and leveraging external funds wherever possible. But you can see what those are and going across the, the different. Sorry, let's just slide there. Sets of properties. So along with those reductions, there we go. You know, there's a lot of co-benefits that will come with that. So it's supporting green jobs, about 1,500 jobs would be supported with, with that level of investment. About $300 million worth of improvements to the commercial real estate. And then, of course, 121 million dollars a year in energy costs that are leaving the community that people can use to shop at local businesses and reinvest in themselves. So a lot of co-benefits would come with that. Excellent. So looking now at the, where the transportation reductions come from. Again, there's a, there is a heavy emphasis here on EVs just because looking at, you know, all the traffic that's out there and how those cars are going to cycle over time is one thing that we can, we can look at and model. That, together with transitorian development, would reduce those transportation commissions by 91%. You know, definitely want to note that the, the transitorian development piece of that is, you know, to, to some of the comments that were made earlier by the citizens, those could be much greater. Those are, you know, looking at just a few targeted strategies that are sort of on the near-term horizon. And the more of those kinds of investments we can make over time, the less will be required of infrastructure for electric vehicles. Going to keep going, I'm not sure if I'm the only one who can see this slide, but, but, you know, some of the other things that can, there we go. That can come from that investment in transitorian development. So we looked at both increasing BRT lines along rural and baseline roads as well as just some moderate levels of improved density that, you know, we believe will come basically following the same kind of development patterns that have been recent in the downtown area. Those kinds of things, you know, could reduce substantially the amount of investment that's needed for EV charging infrastructure as well as avoiding a lot of electricity that needs to, green electricity that needs to come online to, to support those things. But, you know, we are looking at, you know, in order to facilitate people to make those transitions, about $36 million would be required for all the charging infrastructure. Works out to maybe $3 million a year is what would be needed to, you know, again, facilitate those people that are going to want vehicles and make sure that they can do them with, with an EV. Excellent. So just to reiterate some of the findings here, transportation-related strategies are critical. You know, that is the, the piece of the pie, not only in Tempe, but everywhere that is continuing to grow and really deserves a lot of focus. That 100% clean electricity transition is very important and will require the city to work with the utilities to, to facilitate that happening and put pressure on them to make the changes on, on their end. But really, the transitorian development and building energy, those first-in strategies that are really going to deliver more benefits directly to Tempe residents are, are critically important and, and really, you know, should be the focus of a lot of attention going forward. Excellent. The last one, just to kind of reiterate where we projected these things to go. You know, this analysis was sort of painting with, with broad brushes. You know, there's a lot of this, this data builds over time. I noted that people talked about the 2015 and then 2020 inventory. So I've been doing this work for over a decade. And a lot of cities, when they got on this journey, they started, sort of started with that, that same pattern. Oh, we did an inventory and then we didn't do a whole lot. And then we came back and did another inventory and just sort of checking in on it. And really, what many communities are moving towards now is sort of a sustained effort in looking at these kind of analyses and continually looking at the data year over year because it gets better every year. And it gets better as investment in staff capacity to have conversations across departments with the community players and community organizations that will help create these, these kinds of solutions and a much broader array of solutions that take these things more comprehensively. That's going to have, happen over time. And that's going to happen through the kinds of investments that Brayden's going to be asking for in the staff capacity to go out and find those monies and continue to build that evidence base to make these changes.
Thank you so much, Mike. Really appreciate it. And you can see, having that additional data and evidence to back up why the investments that our office is recommending, where that's coming from. So let's just review some of the critical things that you all are already working on that are moving us towards decarbonization, that we need to have additional force behind and intention behind. So continuing to support transportation demand management and the mobility hub work. Amazing leadership from engineering and transportation on this. We need to continue to support that work, including the creation of a Transportation Management Association. I loved what I heard from Councilmember Arundhati Savage a few weeks ago about the need to really up our education and outreach around the different modes of transportation that are available. There's so much that, that can be done in our schools and out in public to make sure people understand this type of communication. There's also a need, when you see this opportunity upcoming around our general plan, there's an opportunity to invest in a general plan that shows land use changes that supports land use changes around bus rapid transit investments, around the streetcar extension. There's also an opportunity to make sure that we're getting attention on vehicles miles traveled as part of our general, our new transportation plan when engineering and transportation starts that later this summer. And then there's the continued ability to invest in electric vehicles, both in terms of our own city fleet and in terms of community EVs, as well as working regionally. Next slide, please. It's not up on my, my screen.
Are you seeing it now, Brayden?
No, no, just, I'm still in the council chamber view.
Okay, standby. Brayden, I'm not sure why it's not. It was working a second ago.
It's okay. I'll, I'll just wrap it up. So in closing, there's these continued opportunities. Here, here we go. Next slide after this. There's also the opportunity to support the local EV transition. So that's looking at the EV-ready code that we're working on with community development. We have to find a way to motivate $3 million a year in infrastructure investment. So there's an opportunity to continue to work on that with community development and with engineering, transportation, and municipal utilities. There's also an opportunity to continue to work on public-private partnerships and utility partnerships. We also, in future years, can fund a community and EV fleet specialist. And we're also looking to fund a policy and grants coordinator that can help us go after federal and potentially state funds in the EV space that will be critical. Next slide. On the energy side, we have to find a way to eventually get to $200 million a year in residential and commercial energy emissions. At some point, you'll have the opportunity to fund an energy equity specialist. You, there is an opportunity to fund a pilot project in energy equity in this year's proposed budget. And then there's an opportunity to fund a green programs, green building senior specialists in community development to help move that work forward. There's also many opportunities in the building code work, both in the short term and in the longer term, that will help this as well. Next slide. So in conclusion, what you've heard today gives us some additional evidence as to why we need to be moving forward and how we move forward in carbon neutrality. So you're going to have asked from us for increased personnel capacity, not just in our own department, but also in municipal utilities, in community development, in engineering and transportation, to help move forward this work from personnel perspective. There's a huge opportunity from a policy perspective upcoming in the general, general plan update to really make sure we have the land use changes that will support decarbonization. And then there's amazing departmental collaborations, whether it's, you know, with fire, medical rescue on solar, our human services on Envision Tempe, or many of the other partnerships I've described tonight. Departmental collaboration is a huge piece of this decarbonization work. Next slide. And then there's also the opportunity to continue to expand on our utility partnerships, the really deep importance of MAG and Valley Metro in this work. We are continuing to work hard, both with cities and federal partners on, on potential federal and philanthropic funding for this work. And then there's, there are opportunities, as Mike has discussed, to make sure that we're making those early investments that are equity-centered, that allow for the type of transportation and energy investments that, that target some of our most vulnerable residents and residents that, that need these investments first. So with that, there's a lot of opportunity ahead. Really appreciate KLA, Grace Kelly, Brand Fisher, the Budget Office, Strategic Management Diversity, Municipal Utilities, Engineering, Transportation, and Community Development for helping us put all the data and the work together for, for this. And it's been many years coming for us to be able to present to you in this kind of evidence-based way that's deeper than just the carbon inventory. And now you'll know that when we come to you in the future, we have this additional evidence backing up where, where, why we're making the investments we're recommending. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. Really appreciate it. I'm going to now look to council to see if there are any comments or discussion on this item. Councilmember Cubey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you so much, Brayden, and to your entire staff. And thank you, Mike, and Lundgren Associates. You picked one of the best firms to do this in the country. And so thank you to procurement too, because I think we really scored a home run here. So we need to do more and we need to do better. I want to talk about, this directly relates, the, the visit of Karen Cito, who is a Yale scientist, a geographer, who came to campus this week. And she was reporting on the new IPCC sixth report, the sixth assessment report. So there's three chapters in the IPCC. It's physical science, which talks about the climate science and risks and vulnerabilities. And the third one is mitigation of climate change or adapting to climate change. And it's the first time that the mitigation aspect has been an element in the IPCC report. They have really updated it, upgraded it. They've, and Karen talked about, the report essentially highlighted how the report has substantially increased the urgency of the message. And she said, "Recent changes in the climate are widespread, rapid and intensifying, and unprecedented in thousands of years. Any further delaying concerted global action will miss the brief, rapidly closing window to secure a livable future." So it was really interesting to see not just the mitigation work really fully developed, but demand-side management considered for the first time. So it was added as a category. So think about demand-side management, not just talking about reducing the carbon of what we currently have, the same demand we've already had, but reducing the actual demand. And that's a big lift, but it's, it's a crucial and intense need. So they talked about three areas in this report, which Karen was the editor of, in demand-side management. And one is socio-cultural factors. So that's associated with individual choices and, and how these lifestyle choice changes require systemic changes across society. So that directly involves urban, urban action. Number two, infrastructure use, related to the design and use of supporting hard and soft infrastructure that enables changes in individual choices and behavior. We are directly dealing with infrastructure, especially talking about green infrastructure versus gray infrastructure in our city. And lastly, number three, the end-use technology adoption, which refers to the uptake of technologies by end-users. And that's a little bit out of our hand, but it's not because we're adapting to a new electrified world or a world that we hope to see electrified. So this, all of these areas, that's where cities come in. And, and we need to have our emissions by 2030. And the way cities are structured, we need to fundamentally change that structure. So we need more walking and cycling and electrified transport. These are all things the city Tempe is working towards. We need to reduce air travel and we need to adapt our houses and build green buildings. So I bring this up because on one of the slides, we talked about energy reductions. The main strategy, one of the main strategies for energy reduction was critical investments within residential for energy equity. And I know that is in the red line. I think it's one of the first red-lined items. It's about $96,000. And I do realize it's going to impact, we can get to talk about this when we talk more directly about the budget. There's impacts. If you, if you add something, you're going to remove something else. I have some suggestions for that. But I want us to really look at energy equity because if we are truly applying equity lenses and perspectives to our sustainability efforts, and we've moved, and Brayden, I credit you for a shift in culture and the way we see sustainability as mainly about equity. So as we continue this, this move towards a more equitable city, to look at this equity position, I think is really essential for really approaching those that are most in need and most in need of help with updating their, their systems so they can become more energy efficient and save utility costs. Utility costs. It's a good thing. So anyway, I just wanted to add that. And thank you so much to the whole staff for the Office of Sustainability and Resilience. I appreciate all that work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Councilmember Arundhati Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Brayden and team. I really do appreciate the work and all the information. It was a lot of information, right? So I just want to say thank you for that. And the one thing, I just want to mention a couple of things here too. And I got a phone call today and it, it just kind of gave me a little room for pause and it made me think a little bit about when we talk about our partners who are utility and it made me think a little bit about when we talk about our partners, who our utility partners are. And I noticed that Southwest Gas wasn't mentioned in here, or I don't know if they were part of the study, but I think it would be really great to incorporate them. I think we all just recently got an email from them in regards to just kind of talking about what they're doing with their energy systems. And I noticed in there, when you look at their line on page 17, which I have no idea what slide that is, but in my thing, it's page 17. And it just shows the natural gas bar just saying exactly the same. And, and from that email, I just want to do them justice also, that if they are making changes and doing things for our residents, I think we should at least capture that. That should be part of the discussion. And, Braden, I really do appreciate the growth in, in the department and everything that you guys are doing. I mean, I go back to not that long ago, it was just a one-man show. And we have certainly grown, and now you have Brand, and I think within the budget, we're adding three more positions. And, you know, you're able to do a lot of really great things. So I certainly do appreciate that, and do appreciate the attention and, and what we continue to do in our consciousness as we move forward. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Aronado Savage. Councilmember Adams.
Yes, I just want to pony on what my councilmember QB and councilmember Aronado had said. I think it was a great presentation. I'm glad to see that the carbon emissions are going down. And so, we are going in the right direction, but obviously, we need to do a lot more to keep moving in that direction. I will be supporting these positions to be added to the budget, and look forward to continuing to reduce our carbon emissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Either the council members, any comments or questions? Councilmember QB.
Just a comment. So, I do see gas included in the mix. And we know, we know actually that one of our prominent utilities, APS, is pretty much made it, whoops. Oh, not as a, right, not as, you're saying not as on the logo? The logo was left out? Because it was included in the study.
Was it? Because it doesn't say anything in the change in there.
Natural gas, it shows, well, slide 17.
Right, but they're not. Yeah, so, what we did here, it, it, very, point well taken. What we did here, we have a meeting set up with Southwest Gas in the next few weeks to talk to them about some of the exciting decarbonization that work that they're doing. In order to not get too distract, distracting from the presentation, we decided to just leave their emissions flat, and not necessarily growing or decreasing, in order to really have that conversation around the work and partnerships that we're doing with the electric utility, knowing full well that we have been and will continue to work with Southwest Gas. There are a lot of cities around the country that are showing gas in their cities going to zero. We don't see that happening in the next several decades. We continue to see Southwest Gas as part of the energy mix of our city. And so, we thought it was important to sort of not get into a deep discussion here about the work that we're going to be doing with Southwest Gas, even though that's definitely on the table in terms of the decarbonization work they're doing, and, and what our opportunities are, are there. So, we will continue to be a partner with Southwest Gas. We will make sure we put their logo on, on future presentations that are like this one, and they will continue to be part of our sustainability and resilience efforts. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Sounds good. Thank you, Brad. Appreciate it. Vice Mayor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a representative of Southwest Gas here. I don't know if we want to give him the opportunity to address any of that, if you so choose, or you don't have to.
So, I'll ask the city, Madam City, is that, is that okay? Or do we, or is that, would?
No, actually, Mayor, I, I'm, I'm very sorry to, to say that I, I don't believe we can take that presentation.
Okay.
As part of this agenda.
My mistake, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. All right, let's see. Anyone else? Comments or questions on this item? All right, hearing none. Thank you again. Braden, really appreciate it. And obviously, thank you, Michael, as well, from Kim Lundgren Associates for the presentation. As Councilmember Aronado Savage said, lots of information, but lots of really great information. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
All right. Let me see, I'm looking at the agenda here, because I know we've got that 5:30 stop. I'm wondering if I could do a quick reorder. Ryan, do you know how long your presentation is for the adaptive reuse item?
Five to seven minutes.
Let's, let's, let, let's do that, then. Because I'm worried that the next two would probably run over that 5:30 mark. So, so let's move then to item 3D, Adaptive Reuse Program Update. And I'm going to call upon Ryan LeVake and Josh Rutherford.
There you go. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Ryan LeVake here, Deputy Director with Community Development Planning Division. With me?
Hi there, Josh Rutherford, Deputy, Deputy Project Coordinator in Building Safety.
All right. Today's presentation will go over the Adaptive Reuse Program. So this item closely aligns with City Council Priority Number Five, Maintaining Long-Term Financial Stability for Economic Development and Business Retention. The couple of components we'll be going over is the overview of the Adaptive Reuse Program, some examples of adaptive reuse projects, since we've had the program in existence for a little over eight years now, and then opportunities for updates with City Council direction. After, the Adaptive Reuse Code text amendment was approved back in October of 2014. During that time, Mayor at the time was a council member, and he actually initiated this program, where we went out to research City of Phoenix and their programs. I think Councilmember Navarro, I think, was also on the committee as well. Okay. And took a lot of effort and coordination to find out what, what did adaptive reuse mean to City of Tempe, and try to create a Tempe version of that. So, we adopted the program back in 2014. And it's really looking at, how can we take old and maybe tired buildings that need updates, refreshes, and when there's requirements to code provisions, to change those, those buildings? There sometimes is some issues with the conformance or compliance with codes and regulations. So it's a way of looking at creatively how to adapt those buildings to new uses. The Adaptive Reuse Program criteria basically looks at some components of the age of the building, 20 years, whether the site is within 100 feet of an arterial street, and whether the new use changes the occupancy. Similar to like, say, going from retail to a restaurant use is, is the common request we see. The building included has any additions, or the overall building size is no more than 5,000 square feet. And then we've given the Community Development Director to authorize that at least two of these criterias is required to be eligible for the Adaptive Reuse Program. Specifically, in the zoning development code, what the Adaptive Reuse Program provides is relief in mechanical equipment screening. So it looks at alternative methods of new mechanical, which is typically requires any upgrading HVAC. You know, you've got bigger mechanical units that then require that screening. So there's a relief in the code for that. As well, there's an option for general, different, general parking standards. We're looking to, I'm sure, maintain the minimum required number of spaces for ADA. And then alternate parking standards, so basically a 50% reduction in the restaurant parking standards. And then we calculate the, the area ratios for just the occupant area where a restaurant is having. So we exclude hallways, restrooms, kitchens, and storage areas. Provide alternate methods for calculating parking for public parking areas nearby, as well as a reduction in outdoor dining space parking. The Adaptive Reuse also has alternate parking facility landscape standards and equivalency methods for achieving the lighting standards for the site. Now, we'll have Josh go over the technical review aspects for Building Safety Code.
Thank you, Ryan. So the other part of the program is when they come to the technical part, and we need, you know, permits to approve, you know, what they're, what they're going to do there is, is there's a couple bullets here that I think are probably the most used for the Adaptive Use Program. And you'll see the sprinkler systems, and then the onsite stormwater retention. Those are usually sort of project killers. And so, this program, those are the two, I think, the most used technical pieces of the building that, that save the, you know, these businesses a lot of money. The other part of it is the evaluation report in lieu of formal plans. It's almost equivalent to a formal plan, but it, it's just a document that a registrant is sealing stating, hey, we're going to meet these requirements of the building code, but I'm, I'm sealing this in, as, at a report instead of a plan. I haven't seen this too much as part of the program in the recent years, but it is an option. Adaptive reuse projects. So we wanted to highlight a few of the projects over the last few years that, that this program has utilized. This one, circa 78, 1803 East Rio Salado Parkway. It's just east of McClintock on the south side of Rio Salado. It was a former auto repair facility that has now been transformed into a small office and some warehouse. Fate Brewery, just on Southern Avenue, east of Mill Avenue on the south side, former office building with an added brewery on the front now, and bar restaurant. And then they obviously refaced some of that building to make it a little bit, have a little bit more curb appeal. The third one here is The Wedge, as some of you may or may not know, is the old college bookstore. This was a pretty big transformation for this building, as you can see from the before and after pictures, you know, from the old bookstore to now five or six restaurants in, in this building. So this one's probably, probably the biggest one that, that was the benefit of the Adaptive Reuse Program. The last one here, Postino's, which was typically Tempe Market, Tempe Marketplace, when it originally utilized the Adaptive Reuse Program. You can see it was a former Circle K gas station. And that marketplace lasted, I think, for maybe a year or two, till Postino's kind of came in and, and took that over, but still a very, very good use of, of the program there. So, and as you can see from the transformation. Some of their projects, we just sort of listed here, and you may recognize some of them. Core Power Yoga, I think that was one of the first businesses to utilize the program, and is still there today. Blaze Pizza and First Watch, that was the, the old Zia Records. Now it's two businesses still there, you know, pretty, pretty unique Adaptive Reuse there. Some of the most recent ones, you'll see the Dunkin' Donuts there on, on South Kyrene. That was an old drive-through, dry cleaning business, and now it is a drive-through donut and coffee. So, pretty, pretty unique one there as well. And Dapper Use, obviously, the, the project assistance team that was created after the Adaptive Use Program is, is, is now leads that program, and is the main point of contact for that. Now I'll turn it back over to Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. So, we know the planned program's been in existence for about eight years now, and there's opportunity to explore new ideas, new concepts. We have been looking at some potential changes, looking at evaluating maybe building size eligibility. Is there a need to look and adapt for more alternative parking standards? So we want to hear back from the community, City Council direction at this time, whether or not we seek more updates in the code, look for possibly business feedback stakeholders that have used the program, and, and bring forward basically some updates for the code. With that, I'll open it up for council correction, questions.
Sounds good. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Josh. Really appreciate it. Let me first go to Councilmember Adams.
Yes, I love the adapt and reuse process. It's really cool to see those buildings turn into, you know, go from ice swords to really classy buildings. So, congratulations on that. Can you just elaborate a little bit on the sprinkler system? Josh, we were talking a little bit about that. Can, can you just tell me?
Yeah, so the program, the program allows the, if, if the existing building's water service, so their domestic service that feeds that building, if it can support the fire sprinkler system demand, they can utilize that, that system in place, instead of tapping into the main, you know, for an alternative system, which is, is much more costly.
So, so they'd still have sprinkler systems?
They would still be required, yeah, to have a sprinkler, depending on the change of use, right? So if the change of use is a higher hazard, the code requires that sprinkler system to be installed if it does not have one.
Okay, so you're just not doing like one site fits all?
Correct. Yeah, some of these adaptive reuse, it didn't go to a higher hazard use. So it was business to business, right? So from retail to restaurant, that's not a higher hazard. But if it went from, gosh, I don't know what a good example would be, but there's a, there's a chart in the code, and there's sort of five line items. If it was a lower hazard, and it went in, if it went just one notch above, it would require fire sprinklers.
Okay, and fire, I imagine fires is good with this?
Yeah, they were, they were, they were a part of the development of that, that part of the code to allow that relief, so.
Excellent. Great job. Good to see you again.
Nice to see you as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Either the council members, Councilmember Garland.
Hi. I love the presentation, because adaptive reuse is really a smart thing for communities to do. So I, I love this. I, I think doing any kind of updates to it, so we can get it to be easier for people to be able to use, and hopefully get more buildings in the process, I think that would be a really great thing. But I was wondering if you could tell me, how do you find the buildings, or how do people find you to contact you about the adaptive reuse? Is this on our website? Do we send it out to businesses? Do the Chamber of Commerce has it, that they can send it out? I'm just curious.
Go ahead. It is on our website. So part of the, the, the project assistance team and the building development planning review that was created as a part of that team, it is on that website. You can see we provided the contact there in the slides. That is very much on our website. As far as the Chamber of Commerce, I'm, I'm positive that they know about that program. Typically, when customers or citizens come to us, they say, hey, we want to do this, and then we apply what we think is the best use for that, and identify the best path forward for them. So if we say, hey, we think we can use part of the Adaptive Reuse Program, then, you know, we, we just try to really identify the best path forward.
Yeah, it starts with that initial consultation that they have.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, just thank you for the presentation, and, and kudos to Mayor Woods. I know this was one of his things he brought up as a council member, and it's, it really has flourished. And to be honest, for a city like us, when we're landlocked, our opportunities are limited. And to utilize what we have out there is just tremendous. I think this is going to totally spin off on our Smith and Innovation District, our Broadway District. Thank you. Makers Dick, I lost the word. But obviously, that's our real chance to really catapult this whole thing off, as we've seen other cities across the country that utilize this. And what a unique area they have made, just by making it funky and kind of creative with those reuses. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Any other council members? Additional comments or questions? So I'll say too, you know, one of the things, Councilmember Navarro, he was also very much involved in that process back in 2014, and it's absolutely been a very successful program. And I appreciate all the work that staff has done to make it successful continuously. You know, part of the reason why I asked for this to be on the agenda a few months back was because I, you know, I'd had a few people approach me who had said, hey, you know, we really would like to do additional adaptive reuse programs in the City of Tempe, but, you know, we don't know if the code's really been much updated since 2014, 2015. And so we'd like to see if there are some opportunities to, to do some updates and enhance what we're already doing, which is a very successful program. So I supported everything on that, on that previous slide, in terms of additional ways to just expand the program and make more people eligible, obviously, in ways that, you know, the fire department, as Councilmember Adams talked about, with the sprinkler systems and everything, is still completely compliant, and we're encouraging, you know, building safety and everything else. But at the same time, I think whatever we can do to find ways to reuse some of our older spaces and a lot of our history in this community, but find present-day uses, kind of like what we're talking about. I know this is not the same kind of project, but the Hayden Flower Mill is an example of that. It's, we're not talking about bulldozing, we're not talking about putting up buildings that are going to dwarf the existing structures. We're talking about just trying to find a way to reopen it and enhance the current site, and tell a lot of Tempe's very rich history. And I think we can do that in a lot of other sections as well. So, I'm completely supportive of all the recommendations, and just look forward to seeing what you, what you come back with.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else from council? Nicely done. Great job, guys. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so here's our dilemma now. We, it's 5:15. We have a hard stop at 5:30 before the brief break. Let me see if we can go ahead, though, and start item 3B, the Human Services Impact Report Fiscal Year 2020-2021. And I will, for that, call up, I think Naomi's going to be virtual, Octavia Harris, Nancy Blevins, and Linda Martin.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Paul Bentley, Deputy Human Services Director, sitting in for Naomi Farrell, our director. She is attending a significant collegiate event with her daughter and family, and so we're very pleased to be here on her behalf. So, with me is Nancy Blevins, Tempe Community Council's Board Treasurer, and also the Community Impact Committee Chair, and Octavia Harris, the Tempe Community Council Executive Director. And we're here this afternoon to speak about the Human Services Impact Report for fiscal year Due to the global pandemic, Fiscal Year 21 was unique for everyone, including human services. And so we began the year with a budget reduction exercise that most, that the city went through as well as totality, and we had significant concern about how to achieve our mission with fewer resources. As the fiscal year unfolded, additional COVID-19 related funds became available, allowing human services to fund an additional 24 programs, 13 operated by nonprofit partners, in an effort to provide a relief to those affected by the pandemic. Tempe Human Services has always been committed to delivering equitable services to all members of our community and remaining unwavering from that commitment during the challenging pandemic. We would like to thank all of our employees, our partners, who rose to the challenge and developed creative alternatives to continue providing services during that time. Typically, we bring you updates several times a year. Those updates include presentations on the annual impact report, such as this, and the agency review allocations coming from the Tempe Community Council for upcoming fiscal year. Due to COVID-19, we are presenting a bit later than normal for this, this particular presentation.
Every three years, TCC engages a third-party consultant to conduct a comprehensive human services community needs assessment. It is specific to Tempe's human services needs and assets, which informs the human services system. The most recent community needs assessment was presented to mayor and council in December of 21.
Further, other updates are provided as needed and/or upon request, such as the quarterly housing governing board meeting, and updates about the, the Family Advocacy Center, homelessness, social determinants of health, and others. Human service delivery in Tempe is a system created by a collaborative network of programs operated directly by Tempe and augmented by nonprofit partners funded via the agency review process. This approach has been successful over the years, since the Human Services Department was founded, and we continue to refine this approach. Mayor and council have been provided an impact report in their packet that provides more details about the services and programs delivered during Fiscal Year 21. This will also be accessible on the human services page of the city's website in the near future. As always, we recognize the numerous city departments that participate in this system. These enhanced partnerships play critical roles in supporting human services efforts in the community, and we appreciate all of their partnership throughout the year. Additionally, we benefit from our relationships with neighborhood municipality, I'm sorry, neighboring municipalities, the county, state, and federal agencies, nonprofit agencies, and education and faith-based partners, and we thank all of them for their partnership throughout the years. Finally, we offer additional thanks to the human services staff, the TCC board members, and volunteers. This slide provides a visual representation of how the six target populations, children in youth, people experiencing homelessness, survivors of domestic violence, working poor, individuals with disabilities, and seniors, span all three categories of services, crisis, stability, and self-sufficiency, to create a framework. This helps guide programmatic focus and helps ensure diligent efforts to developing and maintaining a complete system of human services. This, in combination with the human services needs assessment, helps focus planning, growth, and service delivery. Keeping in mind that people do not necessarily interface with the system in a linear way, and may have needs in multiple categories of the system. Additionally, some programs provide services across multiple categories, even though we display them in a primary category just for ease of representation. The next few slides will provide an overview of each category, again, crisis, stability, and self-sufficiency. Each will include the funding allocation, number of programs, and number of individuals served. We are responsive to the needs of individuals and families. Some may only need one time or short duration of assistance, while others need ongoing and long-term assistance. Again, the directory of services in the attached impact report provides more detailed information on each category, population, and program. Now that we've achieved the approach for this conversation, we want to talk about people. And so for a moment, we wanted to specifically focus on the people. This photo shows five Tempe pre-students learning through play while gardening. Tempe Pre is a full-day, high-quality preschool program in 11 classrooms housed in seven local elementary schools in the Tempe Elementary School District. During Fiscal Year 21, Tempe Pre served 164 registered families of three and four-year-olds, of three-year-old and four-year-old children. And as you can see by this quote on this slide, Jessica's family was able to increase their income, their family income, by 44%. The program doesn't only provide benefits to the children, but also the family as a This slide provides a comprehensive view of human services funding sources for Fiscal Year 21. The 11.9 million general fund budget, which represents 45% of human services funding, is offset by about $1.9 million, or 17% in program revenue generated primarily by Kidzone, community supervision, and Tempe Pre. Revenues were substantially lower this year due to COVID-19, but they are there. Tempe Human Services continues to leverage the city's investment by securing additional external funding. For every dollar invested by the city, and I know we've heard this statement before, but it's important to us, for every dollar invested by the city, human services secures $1.32 of external funding. A majority of the 16.6 million in external funding comes from federal funding, supported by the Housing Choice Voucher Program, and other sources of external funding include grants and donations. This is a slide that's similar in nature, but shows percentages. Specifically, it provides an overview of human services funding by percentages for Fiscal Year 21. With this, we show general fund also, the budget of $11.9 million, which is inclusive of Kidzone, Agency Review, Tempe Pre, and remaining department operations appropriations, which includes administrative costs, for a different visual representation. Shown here is an overview of human services, our network of human services in Fiscal Year 21, inclusive of all funding and programs across the three categories amongst the programs. So what this shows is that funding, funding was available and supported a total of 115 programs. Fifty-four of those were operated by the city, 11 of those were funded by COVID funding. Agency Review funded 48 programs. COVID Relief Funds for Nonprofits was a total of 13 programs. So you'll notice that the last row of this slide shows all populations. This represents human services programs that are not population-specific. For example, in the crisis category, the CARE7 Crisis Response Van provides services to any member of the community and not a specific population. So that's a differentiation for that category. Shown here is another example of service. The city of Tempe's Experience Corps program is a local affiliate of the National AARP Foundation Experience Corps. The program places trained adult volunteers aged 50 or older into schools to tutor children in grades one through three that are struggling with reading and literacy. Tempe Experience Corps volunteers have helped more than 3,000 at-risk students reach grade-level reading benchmarks since the city's program was established in 2006. Due to its longtime success, the Tempe program now serves as a national model. This program provides powerful benefits for both the youth and senior participants, ultimately strengthening our community. Nancy?
Now that we've looked at the total framework for FY 2021, we would like to highlight the role Tempe Community Council played in supporting the system of human services. Tempe City Council established a partnership with TCC in 1985 for the equitable distribution of funds to nonprofits providing necessary human services in Tempe. The agency review process, overseen by TCC's Community Impact Committee, continues to successfully depoliticize the distribution of funds to this day. But what really makes Tempe and the agency review process unique is the community-driven focus. In FY 2021, a record number of incredible volunteers who live and/or work in Tempe dedicated 1,400 hours of time and service. And due to COVID, much of this was done virtually.
The impacts of human services system does not just apply to the participants in our programs, but throughout the community. This slide provides some examples of how participating in agency review process created opportunities for our community members to connect with each other and derive positive value from their experience.
So we interrupt for just one second, because Kevin and Linda were also part of an age-friendly summit this week, and we were able to see them there as well. They're everywhere.
Thank goodness.
So, to achieve agency review, Tempe invested just under $1.2 million in agency review during Fiscal Year 2021, and which funded 48 programs from 40 agencies. These funds came from a variety of sources, including $1 million in general funds, $93,000 from display panel sign revenue, and this was during Fiscal Year 21, $35,000 from Together Tempe contributions that were donated directly to TCC. So people who may have wanted a tax-deductible contribution made it directly to TCC. And then additionally, $54,000 that went directly to Together Tempe through water bill donations from residents and businesses.
And although agency review, each agency review program and provided service has a primary population, it is selected by the program agency. We know that in many cases, program services are being provided that may cross-target populations. For example, a program providing music therapy to children selects individuals with disabilities as their primary target population, but is also serving a target population of youth. The result of this community-centered approach is a process that provides a critical and complementary mechanism throughout the system of human services in Tempe.
On this slide, you'll see another example focused on people. So this is one of our partnerships through agency review that's focused on the senior population. Astor Aging's Older Adult Supportive Services Program supports economically, physically, and emotionally vulnerable seniors. Astor Aging was contacted by George, who's the son of Al and Lois, who are in their 80s. Al and Lois really wanted to stay in their home, but after having a heart attack, Al was unable to drive, and Lois is legally blind. George was really concerned about his parents and reached out for help to Astor Aging. Astor Aging helped Al and Lois through a benefits review, determined they were eligible for SNAP benefits, and helped them apply. The specialist at Astor Aging also provided Al with transportation options, utility assistance, and gave them info on the Senior Adult Independent Living Program, or SAIL, for Al and Lois to be able to get assistance with housekeeping services. As a result, Al and Lois were able to stay in their home, meaning aging in place.
Really quickly, actually, too, we just hit the 5:30 mark. Somebody needs to just stop for, pause for a second, just to get the housing committee meeting, and then we can bring back up. Sorry to do that. I just wanted to make sure we stay on track with the open meeting law, so, but thank you. I'll call you right back up.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting and go ahead and get started with the housing meeting. I know, Jason, you need a minute or so to switch over. All right, we're going to go ahead and, we're going to go ahead and reconvene the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session. It is 5:53 PM. We were currently on the getting a presentation on item 3B, Human Services Impact Report, Fiscal Year 2021-2020-2021. And I'm going to go back and turn it over again to Nancy, Octavia, and Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Continuing our presentation, this slide shows performance measures for the city of Tempe. Our system, the human services system, is directly connected to mayor and council's priorities and performance measures. In Fiscal Year 21, there were a total of 19 performance measures related to the Human Services Department. Some examples include department programs, such as the Housing Choice Voucher Program, third-grade reading level, homeless solutions, and agency review. Additionally, human service efforts support additional performance measures noted in gray on the slide that not, were not directly linked to human services when in their creation. The first is 1.23, feeling of safety in city parks, specifically, the Hope and CARE7 teams engage and provide assistance to people experiencing homelessness in the parks and actually throughout the community. 3.13, disability's social inclusion. The Tempe Best Program, which is designed to increase inclusion through the facilitation of employment, training, and ongoing support for applicants with development disabilities. 2.15, participate in decision-making. The mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, known as MIAC, provides Tempe's youth a vehicle for participating in the decision-making process. And then 5.13, the agency review process funded Tempe Center for Habilitation Job Training Program, which assists individuals with disabilities for employment readiness. As we conclude this evening, this slide is a representation of some of the 54 programs that are delivered by Human Services Department during this fiscal year, which includes Tempe Pre, CARE7, BEST, HOPE, our homeless outreach program, Kidzone, and College Connect.
This slide and the one that immediately follows it represent some of our agency partners who provide services to Tempe folks. And I know that you will recognize many of them on here, Tempe Community Action Agency, Junior Achievement, and United Food Bank. A lot of those are, get a lot of airtime, but we also have agencies on here that are smaller, that do a very niche work, and we're very, very proud of each and every one of them, the work that they do to, and bring value to our community.
As we near the end of our update today, we'd like to share a few lessons that we have learned from the COVID-19 process, or COVID-19 pandemic. We have incorporated these concepts into our operating going forward. First is maintaining opportunities for virtual engagement. During the pandemic, many of our programs incorporated virtual spaces for engagement as a means of continuing operations while observing distancing requirements. As a result, volunteer participation numbers increased in both the Tempe Human Services programs, like Experience Corps and Tempe Community Council's Agency Review. Volunteers report that it simply made it easier to participate, it removed a barrier for many people, and it's a process we're going to continue. Another big takeaway is our implementation of hotel-to-housing. This, this model, and due to the social distancing requirements of COVID-19, Tempe partnered with Maricopa County to stand up services at a local motel to ensure a safe, healthy environment for the unsheltered. Through the course of operating this 24/7 model, we learned how valuable this approach can be for overcoming traditional barriers, like finding space for a family or individual when a population-specific shelters are at capacity, or being able to shelter someone with their pet and needing to be able to provide those types of services, and where others may not be able to do the same. Finally, the youth specialist program, during the pandemic, implemented a home visits as part of their normal care and provision for social and emotional supports of our youth. By updating their services in this manner, not only were they able to provide support for those who are transitioning to a remote education opportunities, but they were also able to connect with families as a whole. And so through that opportunity, they were able to enhance services, not only to just the youth, but the families, the collective, and at the same time, there's a process that's going to be, can continue on through the summer. Finally, we would like to thank all the many organizations and individuals that invest in the human services with their grants and donations. You see many of those on this slide as examples, from Together Tempe, Experience Corps, Jerry W. Brock Foundation, and others. We could not do this, and I say this with great emphasis, we could not do this work without their support and the inter-partnerships that we have created throughout the city. With that, we are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the presentation. Really appreciate it. Any members of council? Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things I want to just comment on. We have made a lot of progress in our homeless population and are really ahead of the other communities in our valley, so I'm very proud of our efforts. And I know that our last count, the numbers actually went down with the amount of homeless people we have. So that's, that contributes to your, your hard work, your efforts, and really staying on top of things, so great job on that. Very, I don't think there were any other communities, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, that, that their homeless population actually went down.
With the support of mayor and council, we believe that we've had a significant impact, yes.
Exactly. And when you look at the number of vouchers that you have provided, you know, to the community, and it's just, it's really impressive. So thanks for your hard work on that. And I have a question for Andrew, our city manager. Are you still meeting with the other city managers regarding, regarding the homeless? Because I know you were doing that, and just kind of want to get an update from you.
Oh, sorry. Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Adams, the answer...
So, great job on that. Very, I don't think there were any other communities, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, that their homeless population actually went down.
With the support of mayor and council, we believe that we've had a significant impact, yes.
Exactly. When you look at the number of vouchers that you have provided, you know, to the community, and it's just, it's really impressive. So thanks for your hard work on that. And I have a question for Andrew, our city manager. Are you still meeting with the other city managers regarding the homeless? Because I know you were doing that, and just kind of want to get an update from you.
Oh, sorry. Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Adams, the answer is we are, we are, have taken the conversation primarily, which was located in the East Valley since August of 2017, excuse me, now that MAG has started to organize at a regional level, those conversations are now taking place more at our MAG managers committees. We're getting regular updates through the human services staff at MAG, which includes Nikki Stevens, who was formerly our homeless coordinator here, who now works with the Maricopa Association of Governments. So we are, I think, in part because of the fact that we've pushed at the East Valley level with our managers, now there's a much more stronger emphasis on region-wide solutions for homelessness, which will include all of the municipalities and governments that fall within MAG's jurisdiction.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate that. Also, I know that we have CARE7 and the HOPE team, and they do similar things. I know that not 100%, but I know we don't have HOPE 24/7, seven days a week, you know, seven days a week, obviously. And I'm just wondering if we could look at combining those or something because they're so similar, so we can have the 24/7 coverage for HOPE also, or however you would think that might work, just as a suggestion. And also the Experience Core Program. My old colleague Peggy Goldberg has done such a great job with that program. I was fortunate enough to be able to visit it with Peggy years ago, and it's really, really valuable, and it's great to see these, the improvements that happen with that program. Also, I love to visit the pre-program, and they learn so much, you know, and so when they, when they enter kindergarten, they're really hitting the ground. They know how to stand in line, they know how to, you know, not paw each other and really have, have good manners and good social skills. And I think that's something that's so, yeah, right, no skirt bottles. But I think that really is something that's so important because they are way ahead of the other kids that haven't been in preschool. And it really makes, it really makes a difference in, in their entire education, quite frankly. So that is something that I think we should really brag about and promote because it's so important. And so I just really appreciate that. And they're so darn cute, and I want those kids to come over and help me with my garden because I need some help. So they look like they know what they're doing. Oh, Joel, oh, yeah. Thanks, Joel. Raining on my parade. Also, the aging in place, that is, that's a really good story that you told about those, those folks that were able to stay in their home. I just, that's, that's really touching. When I knocked on about tens of thousands of doors, I met a lot of people that they really want to stay in their home. They don't, they don't want to move, and they want to age in place. And so anything we can do to continue that program, continue expanding it, you would have my support on. So that's, that's another thing, and I'm glad you were able to help them. I also want to give a shout out to Jerry, the Jerry Brock Foundation. He's such a wonderful person, and he is so incredibly giving, and I think that he's very humble, and so I think a lot of people don't realize just how much he helps the community, but he does. And he's even helping with our community building new barns. The barns were falling apart, and he, he was able to make a huge donation, so we were able to replace them. And, you know, and he really cares about horses. And he's just, he's overall just a great guy, and I just really am happy to call Jerry Brock my friend. And this is a great group of human services, you know, partners and everything. All of them are great. So thank you so much. Keep up the great work, and let us know how we can help.
Thank you.
Mayor Woods.
Thank you.
Councilmember Adams, briefly, thank you for the comments. And the comments on Tempe Pre resonate very well, as well as the extension in Kid Zone. And so many of us have children that have been a part of Kid Zone and just see all that connecting, and so it's just fantastic. And speaking about CARE7 and HOPE, CARE7 and HOPE are within one division within the human services area. Both report in, in social services, which is my area, and so I can provide confidence that there is consistent communication and work between the groups. We do see some distinctions as to why we would have them in different workgroups on an org chart, but they are collaborating on a daily basis. Their emergency shelter program that has been funded and serving folks, both populations being served, those that are fleeing domestic violence, those who are experiencing homelessness, or both are all being utilized by both programs. So, but, but very much resonate with what you're saying, yes.
There is help available 24/7, right? I mean, it might not be with the HOPE, but CARE7.
CARE7 is 24/7, yes. And there are certain functions that are needed that HOPE does do during their normal work days, seven days a week, that with mayor and council's support, we've expanded their schedule to seven days a week, not 24/7 at this time. And with that, those pieces that are necessary to continue throughout those times, CARE7 is helping be a part of that system as well, yes.
Okay. And then I was asked about how many volunteers we have with CARE7 and HOPE team. Just, if you can't, if you don't know, that's okay. I'm just curious. Somebody asked me.
Sorry.
That's okay. You can get it to me later.
We can absolutely do that. I know it's substantial for CARE7 with both interns as well as volunteers and being a significant part of their programming, yes.
Okay. I know one of the volunteers well, our old HR manager, Internal Services Manager, Renee Broderick, and she is enjoying volunteering for CARE7. So, yeah, it's really nice that, I guess I missed the, I missed the party over there. But anyway, I really appreciate it, and keep up the good work.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Appreciate it. Anyone else comments? Councilmember Garland?
I just want to say, I loved how you were talking about the numbers, and then you said, now let's just talk about the people. That just, that touches me because I know that that's what your department is, and I think that's why we love human services so much, because there are so many things that we do in the city that, that touch people, but for you to stop and say that, I really appreciate that. I want to say, it's really interesting. I think that your presentation was the presentation that I saw with more performance measures written underneath it than the presentation, presentation that we had, because you touched so many different areas in the community, and I really liked that. And I like the community outreach that we do. I love what TCC does. I have never been a part of the review process, but I would love to learn a little bit more on how you do that and, and the volunteers, that I know a lot of volunteers that work with that. So I'd just love to learn a little bit more offline, not right now, not tonight, thank you. And then, you know, the Together Tempe donations, I don't know, I mean, I honestly didn't know. When you write your water bill and that little bit goes on there, I don't think I ever really paid attention. I was like, yeah, whatever, just pay it. It's great what that money goes to and how it's being used. I just love to do, as Robin says, Councilmember Arredondo Savage says a lot, we need to tell our own story. We need to tell that a little bit more and, and let people know more about where that money is going to and the amount of people that are affected. And, you know, that aging in place story is, could be part of it, or however that money gets used. I think we need to do a better job of telling our story on that one. The other one is the Experience Core. Last year, I was invited to help hand out gifts to the volunteers, and I really enjoyed being there because I got to meet a lot of the volunteers. And I also know a family whose child is part of that Experience Core. And what I thought is, you had talked about the transition in COVID. The volunteers that I, that I spent the time with was, they were telling me about when COVID hit, they had to transfer to online. Now, the volunteer adults are 50-plus, so my age group and higher. And so you look at that and you say that now we have to go on to go online, and the difficulty of that, every, each one of them seemed to have their own story about what that was like. But in the end, they didn't feel like they missed too much time with the kids that they were working with and found, found different ways to make that really important. So I love the transition. I love the way people think outside of box to make that happen. So I just want to tell you, thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any other councilmembers' comments or questions? Councilmember Navarro?
Just a quick recognition. I want to tell you guys, I appreciate your job and the job that you guys do. This is a mammoth piece of work, it truly is. And the fact that we see it out in the streets, the fact that even within my department, how it affects even public safety in various different ways, but having solutions to find homes and shelters and, and services and mental health, and, and the city's been very active in trying to make sure that we're putting efforts in those areas. We're making those things hopefully to satisfy, you know, those, those people that are getting the help for sure, but also getting the right help. And I think that's so tremendous in terms of, when we talk about holistically as a city, when we talk about public safety, I think it's a great opportunity as we expand on these processes and we start building upon them, it starts to integrate with all of our, our things that we touch within the city. So I appreciate what you guys are doing because this is truly, truly a piece of work that has a lot of complications to it, in my opinion, and a lot of needs, in my opinion. And just to have staffing behind it is, is tremendous, and staffing is very important. I'll give you like CARE7. I can't echo enough, I do it all the time, how important CARE7 is to our city and to expand that, because those are the people that actually can find, find those solutions at 1, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning when needed and, or throughout the day, it doesn't even matter. But they have the contacts. But we also need to, as a council, have to fund them fully. We cannot depend on, on gaming grants and things like that. There are certain things that this council has to start funding. And I think that when we see programs like CARE7 and the impact they have, it's a tremendous impact. I know that the city of Phoenix expanded their CR teams, just like CARE7, to, from two units to 10 throughout the city, and they're opening up another shelter on the north side of Phoenix and potentially near the airport. So the expansion is not just a Tempe deal, it's, it's a regional deal. And we need to have that regional help too, with Scottsdale Chandler and all those other entities out there, and just you guys being networking with them is going to have a real impact on what we do here within Tempe. So I just want to say thank you, you guys.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Councilmember Arredondo Savage?
Right, thank you. I only got about a 20-minute speech, so I promise it won't take long. Paul, I'm kidding. No, I just, I figured I might not have another opportunity, and I just want to take a second to say thank you all so very much for what you do. I mean, it's just been an evolution, right, from the day that I was elected to where you are now, in the sense of the services that we're able to provide, the resources that we have. I mean, so you guys have had a lot thrown at you over the years, and you know what? You did it. I mean, you stood up and you took it, and you figured out how we could truly make a difference in the residents in our community. And, and I'm talking whether they're in preschool or whether they're aging in place, it doesn't really matter. You have created a system where there is no wrong door. And to me, that is what it's all about. It's all about being able to help our, our individuals, our people that live here in this community, and being able to make sure that you have a door that opens, and then you're able to get them the resources that you need. And you guys have delivered again and again and again, and been able to, as much as I despise this word, pivot whenever you needed to, regardless of what is coming at you. You have all truly just risen to the challenge, and I couldn't be more proud. And then I think if you just really look, you talk about people, and I like to talk about partnerships. If you look at that partnership screen, all the individual, different groups and organizations that have truly come together to make this happen, we couldn't do it without them, right? So we know it's not a one-man show. We definitely know it's a great collaboration, but it really takes those people wanting to collaborate and make a difference to come together and make that stuff happen. So thank you all for being here. You know, just please express so much, I think, from this council, how grateful we are for your work, the staff, and the volunteers, and everything that they do day in and day out. It is truly making a difference, and I couldn't be more proud and very grateful for your work. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Arredondo Savage. Any of the councilmembers additional comments or questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Great presentation. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Item 3C, Fiscal Year 2022-23 Budget Review Session. I see Tom Dunsing, Mark Day, and Wydell Holmes, who are going to be joining us at the table.
There we go.
Sorry for the delay. I'm not sure what the computer decided to do right there. I don't want to do that. Stop. There we go. There we go.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Tom Dunsing, interim deputy city manager, joined here by Mark Day, municipal budget director, and Wydell Holmes, strategic initiatives manager. I'll just make a few opening comments and turn the heavy lifting open, over to Mark and Wydell. Tonight, we're here to present the first look at the city manager's recommended budget for fiscal year '22-23. Now, what you'll see tonight includes both the operating and capital budget recommendation. Departments have heard council priorities throughout the year, and especially over the last few months, to help frame the discussion and the request for additional funds that address the needs of the department and the service needs. As you all understand, these additional needs are requested through a budget supplemental process. We appreciate the input and anticipate some good discussion on the budget supplementals tonight. And just, just a few things I'd like to note. The discussions at, at this particular point in time typically revolve around the general fund, and in particular, the general fund supplemental request. Tonight, we have categorized the supplemental request into basically three main categories. It's four in your packets, but it's really three main categories on the recommended requests. The first are approved supplementals, and these are based on council priorities that we've heard throughout the year, and those are approved supplement, pre-approved supplementals, excuse me. The next are restorations. One of the things that was important to this council is restoration of budget cuts that occurred during fiscal 2021, and that was at the beginning of the pandemic. There were departments that made cuts that haven't had these budgets restored, and so we heard you, and departments understand that this is a priority. So that's the next category of budget supplementals, restorations. The third really are the new supplementals. The new supplementals are new supplementals to the operating budget and new supplementals that, that happened because of the CIP program. Sometimes CIP projects have impacts on operating budgets, and those are in there as well. As is typically the case, budget supplemental requests are, exceed the amount of funding available, and this year is no different. What I wanted to emphasize is, the city manager and the departments, we took this process seriously. What you see before you is a many-month effort to prioritize needs of departments, to do what we can to restore budgets, and bring it before council in an understandable way, and, and clearly, we're here to answer any questions on that. Lot of information in the packet tonight. Memo summarizing the process, recommended budget, and the strategic management performance measure acceleration. Recommended and non-recommended supplemental listing is in the packet. And finally, summary of community input throughout the budget process. A public process is really important, and hats off to Mark and his staff for going out and actively seeking public input. Mark will walk you through the, the operating and capital budgets in this presentation, and then Wydell will walk you through the priorities where there's a hyper-focus tonight. We seek your input at the end of this presentation on, on, really mainly around the supplemental process and what we can bring forward, and Mark will go through the calendar with you all. And then finally, a special thank you to the budget staff, Lori Vickers, Scott Gruber, Robbie Ashton, and Benicia Benson, who do a phenomenal job of pulling a tremendous amount of information together where we can have a productive conversation to talk about the budget. And it's not possible without the gentleman on my right, Mark Day, who leads this effort and does so gracefully, humbly, and I'm especially appreciative to him. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mark and Wydell and, and look forward to the discussion.
All right. Thank you, Tom. I don't know if I can live up to that, but. Mark Day, municipal budget director. Although the operating capital budgets address various city council priorities and performance measures, tonight's presentation, as well as our public-facing budget process in general, contribute to our goal of transparency in financial reporting and disclosure of information. So that's Performance Measure 2.11 under Council Priority Strong Community Connections. As mentioned, the city budget is developed in a public-facing process. Listed on this slide are the key public meeting dates as we continue to move through the budget process. In February, we held two virtual public forums as well as two pop-up events. In addition, we held an online forum from February 1st through March 7th to gather resident input about budget priorities. In March, we met with the mayor's youth advisory commission to gather youth feedback and budget priorities. Also, the community investment roundtable, a partner with the Equity in Action Program, conducted an independent budget survey to gather additional community input about budget priorities. The results of this budget priorities. The results of the survey and recommendations are included in a People's Budget Tempe document. So all of this feedback has been provided in your packet of materials. So after today, so we're at April 21st, May 5th, we have a budget review follow-up if we're needed. And then the rest of dates there are the statutory required process with tentative adoption on May 26, and then final adoption on June 9, and then adoption of the property tax levy on June 23. So we'll go both, through both of the budgets. I'll start with the operating budget. So the fiscal year 23 recommended operating budget is $618.8 million. That's approximately 9.1% over the 22 budget, once we exclude that $343 million one-time appropriation for payment to the PSPRS for our unfunded liability. The difference between the two budgets represents a $51.7 million increase. So the operating budget amount represents the maximum amount that we can spend next fiscal year. We can make changes based on your feedback today, but once the amount is set at tentative adoption, we cannot add to the budget for next year. The operating budget does include provisions for employee compensation, including cost of living and market increases, salary step and range movement, and other benefit provisions, retirement system contributions, and other post-employment benefits. We've also budgeted contingency amounts for emergencies in each of the major funds. Supplemental budget increases of $27.3 million with $4.5 million in offsets. So sometimes departments have revenue offsets or are offering up expenditure offsets. So the net fiscal impact is $22.8 million across all the funds. So the recommended operating budget is consistent with the long-range forecasts and budget strategies that we presented in February. This slide is a comparison between the adopted 21-22 budget, so the current-year budget, compared to the recommended 22-23 budget for each of the city's major operating funds. For each of the funds, the increases in the budget can be attributed to additions to the budget via the budget supplementals, which will be covered in the next slides, employee compensation increases, and contractual and supply increases like fuel and electricity. The budget also includes, the 23 budget includes reappropriation of budget from the current fiscal year to the next fiscal year for equipment and supplies that have been ordered but will not be received. So a number of the departments are experiencing delays in the receipt of items that have been ordered. So we'll reappropriate that budget to next year. The reappropriation amount across all funds is $13 million. Just for reference, in the current year, we only had to reappropriate $6 million. So we're definitely experiencing some of the delays in receipt of items. So the next few slides, I'm going to go over the operating budget supplemental request. This slide summarizes the restoration supplementals that Tom talked about. These were from the 2021 budget reductions that remained unrestored. So based on council feedback, priority and funding was provided for restoration of 21 budget reductions. In the current-year budget, we restored a number of the adjustments. So the reductions were in 2021. In 2122, we restored quite a few of them. And departments were instructed to request any remaining restorations if needed as part of the 23 budgets. So as you can see, $3.6 million in the general fund and $200,000 in the arts and cultural fund. So none of the other funds have restorations that need to be made. As far as positions, the recommended budget includes the restoration of 26 general fund positions and two arts and culture fund positions. So these positions were in a frozen status. So we've restored all of the positions that were frozen, starting in fiscal year 21, with the exception of one halftime position that was not requested to be restored. In addition to the restoration supplementals, the recommended operating budget includes funding for pre-approved supplementals, new funding requests, and operating budget impacts for CIP projects. So your packet contains a detailed listing of recommended as well as not recommended supplementals and a descriptions of all those requests. This slide shows the recommended supplemental funding by fund with the total cost, any offsets, and then the net fiscal impact, and number of positions, we call them FTEs, to be added. I'm going to highlight the general fund on the next slide, but this is, you can see for all the funds here. Just some highlights from the other funds other than the general fund. Continued build-out of the EMT program. I do want to note one error on the slide. It says $5.5 million for the ambulance fund, just so Chief Reese doesn't think he's getting a windfall. That's really half a million dollars, so I apologize for that. Expansion of the arts and culture program. Additional staffing for the transportation program, additional equipment and staffing for the water and wastewater programs. So like the general fund, the supplementals for the other cities' major operating funds are sized based on the capacity of those funds. And then, this is the general fund. This is a display of, in dark blue is what was the total requested, and light blue is the total amount funding, or that is being recommended for funding. Wydell's going to cover the recommended funding for those areas that you wanted to prioritize in the 23 budget. But here are some other highlights on the recommended general fund supplementals. Recommended supplementals include operating costs for the police and human services drop-in center, high school youth specialists, this is one-time funding that's recommended for recurring, a veterans coordinator position, software solutions for efficiency and productivity, funds to cover the public outreach for the 2050 general plan, human services resource navigator, and a social services counselor. So as I mentioned, a complete summary and description of all the general fund supplementals are in your packet of material. So now I'm going to transition. So we do adopt two budgets. I'm going to transition over to the capital budget. The 22-23 CIP budget, we call it CIP Capital, Capital Improvement Program budget, is 117 million higher than 21-22. Although we adopt a five-year capital program, only the first year of the CIP is formally adopted in the budget process. This slide highlights the 21-22 adopted budget compared to the 22-23 recommended budget. The increases and decreases you see there are due to changes in the reappropriation amounts. I talked about that earlier, about delays in receipt of supplies and materials. From one budget year to the next, the reappropriation amount this year for 22-23 was $58 million higher than the current year. So that's driving some of these large increases you see in the recommended amount. Other changes include additional funding for projects and funding for Phase 1 of the Tempe Municipal Operations Center. And then we had two follow-up items from the initial recommended CIP presented at the March 24th Work Study Session. The first was a request to increase the number of transit bus shelters installed per year from the proposed accelerated amount of 30. So currently, we replace five to 10 shelters per year. Staff has indicated that 30 is their goal for next year based on the challenges of implementing a new design concept, or constructing the new shelters, and the lead time necessary for right-of-way eneasement, that is, for right-of-way eneasements, as well as they're experiencing material and labor shortages. Staff will work with a consultant to increase the number of installation in future years once design concepts are finalized and right-of-way eneasement challenges are resolved. And then the other follow-up item was the Roosevelt Storm Drain Project. We are recommending that design and construction be moved up one year with design in 22-23 and construction anticipated in 23-24. So at the last meeting, there was a couple of open items. One, this project is funded in cooperation with City of Scottsdale and the Flood Control District of Maricopa County. So we do have confirmation that the Flood Control District, excuse me, can move up their funding. And then we are working on an IGA to upfront the cost for the City of Scottsdale to then be reimbursed by them at a future date. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Wydell.
Hey, thanks, Mark. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to present the acceleration models for the fiscal year 22-23. Tonight, we'll be presenting the 13 performance measures that were identified during the council's early emphasis on what we wanted to prioritize in the budget this year. That was very helpful and informing staff. And so I really would like to thank the departments for all the work that they do in putting together these acceleration models and really honing in on innovative strategies that will help us achieve our targets with each of these particular measures. We did identify these at the December 16th Work Study Session, and again, informed by the Startool data. Tonight, though, there are also four acceleration models that were not previously presented to council at the CIP presentation back in March. All of the performance measures that have been identified for acceleration are consistent with the areas of opportunity for improvement that were identified in both the 2022 Community and Business surveys that we do. And those surveys indicated areas of neighborhoods, streets, sidewalks, as well as economic and business development, social, human services, and traffic as areas for opportunity. So it's really important to note that the alignment with these acceleration models, in addition to council's priorities, they're aligning to what our community and our business respondents are also saying. I'd also like to note that we do continue to create strategies that are informed through a lens on equity and inclusion. And as Mark mentioned earlier in your agenda packet, you have a complete listing of both the recommended and not recommended supplementals for the operating budget. But I would like to note that it is possible that a department submitted an operating budget supplemental that may have not been recommended for funding. And so the items that I'll be sharing with you tonight on the acceleration models are the items that are recommended. So moving towards our first model brings us back to pavement quality index. And as Mark mentioned earlier, a lot of times, we need to bundle both our capital improvement funding with our operating funding in order to really achieve that PQI of 70 that we're trying to achieve as a community. And so this particular supplemental is in regards to the seal coat materials that are necessary to go alongside the CIP investments that we previously spoke about at the March 24th meeting. The team is focusing on residential streets, as that is 57% of our pavement network, and residential streets are at 54 right now in comparison to our target of 70. Again, the planned projects, while focusing on residential, we are looking at for 2022, projects have included University Park, Maple, Ash Area, Daly and Clark Park areas, and in 2023, Victory Acres. We do want to leverage opportunities with development and redevelopment for improving our street pavement quality. And so an example of that would be the pavement improvements along Apache with the street car project and removing potholes. Not previously presented in March was an acceleration model in regards to feeling of safety in your neighborhood. And for this particular performance measure, we have several acceleration strategies that are built on building relationships. That includes neighborhood policing, community responders and neighborhood ambassadors, having both formal and informal neighborhood connections through strategies like arts and block watch, as well as partnering. Again, none of these strategies are done without interdepartmental support, and partnering with code enforcement. The supplemental tonight, the requests and recommendations are for about $3.5 million. And this includes the staff study restoration that Mark mentioned earlier, homeless park safety initiative, as well as a joint police and human services drop-in center in North Tempe. The next acceleration model is in regards to ending homelessness. And I know you had quite a discussion earlier during the Human Services and TCC presentation regarding that. And just as a reminder, the CIP budget was really about increasing program capacity and shelter, whether it be calls for service, hours of service, mental health, employment services. And then other acceleration strategies are in regards to program and geographical outreach, as well as increasing access and connection to programs. The operating budget is really about creating the staffing models that are needed to achieve an end to homelessness in Tempe. And I do want to note, and thank you for this earlier, Mark, that the My Heart Response Team, the NA, really just means that it was 100% offset. So that's why it's not included in the supplemental request of 173,000. Some of the strategies that I do want to remind council of, in addition to the three I listed earlier, we do have a Harvard Bloomberg Innovation Track with a core city team selected by the city manager and led by Deputy City Manager Roseanne Chalcy. And this is an innovation track where we're trying to look at homelessness, not only from those who are unsheltered, but also from the intersection of the impact on all of our communities, our residents, and our businesses. So this innovation track will do two things. It'll help us as a community create innovative solutions around homelessness, as well as create an innovation design model that we can transform with our organization and create practices citywide. Also, another strategy in regards to homelessness has been interconnections with ADOT and the Tempe Police Department in regards to panhandling. Moving to our next acceleration model in regards to tree coverage, our goal of 25% tree and shade canopy. A main CIP project is in regards to our Parks Urban Forest. And then again, the corresponding and connected supplementals are in regards to that program, as well as the climate-adapted urban forestry and a Parks Urban Forest program. And so this particular acceleration model is really focusing on the maintenance and acceleration of, and balancing those two things with both a living asset as well as the need for more shade in our community. And also, the council recently spoke in the need for loss prevention. So there is an effort, again, interdepartmentally in regards to enforce loss prevention and preserve the plannings that, investments that both the city and both private development has made in our activities here in the community, in addition to community outreach. The next particular acceleration model is in regards to carbon neutrality. And I think the heavy lifting was already done by Dr. Braden K. tonight and his consultants. But just want to emphasize, on this particular slide, the capital improvement program is really about, you know, policies, programs, and infrastructure. And this is in relation to green buildings, sustainable facilities, energy efficiencies, and retrofits, as well as our electrical vehicle fleet and resilient energy hubs. The operating supplementals on the next slide really are to continue to achieve carbon neutrality. And there were several items that Dr. K. presented tonight. I would just like to combine with this part of the presentation, is these supplementals really relate to both the personnel, the strategically unused through planning, the departmental collaborations, our utility partnerships, regional, federal, and philanthropic, I'll say that at this time of the evening, right? Philanthropic partnerships, you know what I'm trying to say? And then equity-centered. The supplementals that are recommended for funding relate to both youth climate, neighborhood resilience, grant management, as well as green programs. The, I also want to mention that part of the other, the supplementals on this slide also relate to food access and connect to clean energy and electric vehicles. And that's for about $1 million in regards to operating supplementals. Continuing on with another acceleration model that wasn't previously presented back with you in March with the CIP budget, is in regards to feeling of safety in parks. And really, the operating budget supplemental that is closely aligned to this acceleration model is our homelessness and park safety initiative. The acceleration strategies also include the Chief's Office of Community Policing, and this is in tandem with CAR7. And then again, as I mentioned previously, community responders and neighborhood ambassadors, also the security to monitor parks, have directed patrol, park maintenance and cleanup, and park activation. And then as we move from parks, we'll move to transportation system satisfaction. This is a reminder, this is the transit survey, and this data comes from the survey of both the ridership. And the acceleration models are really in regards to expanding the street car and implementing bus rapid transit, implementing a 10- to 15-minute frequency pilot program, shade at bus stops, as Mark mentioned earlier in the previous discussion in regards to the CIP, adding transit lanes, which would help with on-time performance reliability, and increasing access to the transit system. And a small budget supplemental request is recommended at $5,000, and this is in regards to the Transportation Master Plan. The other acceleration model not previously presented in March in regards to the CIP budget, but does have budget supplementals we'd like to present this evening, is in regards to property code enforcement. Just as a reminder, some of the key acceleration strategies involve around education, assistance partnerships, and enforcement. And the supplemental tonight really is about a code compliance inspector. And this would really help focus on commercial property- And this would really help focus on commercial properties and creating smaller geographic areas for the code inspectors to really have focus and help accelerate and achieve our goal in regards to the composite score of getting to 85% compliance. And the housing inventory ratio, this is a pretty straightforward one. Most of the acceleration in regards to permanent supportive housing through Hometown for All with the city-owned properties, contracted properties, in collaboration with private development, are primarily related to the capital improvement program. And there are not any supplementals recommended that relate to this particular housing inventory And with our right-of-way landscape maintenance, that word I actually can say at this hour of the evening, just wanted to let you know that, again, staff continue as a strategy to focus on maintenance, revitalization, as well as prioritization that's informed by our community survey and satisfaction data. And this particular supplemental is in regards to that bundled CIP impacts in regards to, you know, potentially the $5 million CIP investment. There's some operating funds necessarily to help carry that through of about $72,000. And then our next-to-last acceleration model is our traffic delay reduction. And again, this is again bundling the CIP recommended funding along with our supplemental requests for the Prop 400E projects, as well as a civil engineer. The civil engineer focus would be on active traffic management, which is one of the key strategies in regards to utilizing the infrastructure, the technology, and the operations to maximize efficient flow through the city to reduce traffic delays. And the final acceleration model that is new for this evening, it was prioritized again back in December, but just wanted to talk a little bit about the Tempe's approach to addressing opioids. And I really want to commend the staff in regards to adopting a strategy framework that is a national framework from Health and Human Services Department. And really, it's about utilizing better data points, better pain management, improving access to treatment, increasing the availability of overdose-reducing drugs, and then also supporting cutting-edge research. And the main supplemental that's tied to addressing opioids, in addition to, you know, the continued operating budget funding that we use for all those programs, is in regards to our wastewater biomarker program in regards to public health. And this particular supplemental, a little bit near and dear to my heart, is in regards to really starting to move our program away from total reliance on grants and opportunity of research with ASU, which has been phenomenal partnership, but really making sure that we have a way to sustain the biointel program through our wastewater analytics. And this particular supplemental is in regards to staff from our municipal utilities department that would continue to help with the sample collection, as well as moving over some funds to have laboratory analysis, not just for opioids, but primarily also for some other public health indicators in our community. And so with that, I will conclude and turn it back over to my colleagues. Thank you.
So Mayor members of the council, we'll do our best to answer questions. If there's questions that we can't answer, programmatic questions, we do have representatives of the departments here that can help us out. But Mayor, we turn it over to you. So thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for the presentation. Really appreciate it. Councilmember Adams.
Very excellent presentation. So good job. You guys are the dream team up there. So anyway, I have, you know, the budget's near and dear to my heart, so I have some questions for you. And if you can't answer, no worries. I'm sure you can get back to us. But the temporary employee that Kim spoke about earlier in the Water Department and that he's been a temporary for eight years, I'm wondering, can we make that up? Can we get him fully funded and a permanent employee?
So Mayor, Councilmember Adams, I turned back and talked to Ms. Tara Ford, the interim director there, and they are actively recruiting for that right now. It is a full-time benefited position.
Very good. That's great news because I know he's worked so hard. He's wonderful out there. And Kim talks about him all the time, so I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. As a former city employee, I understand the efforts it takes to put this budget together. So it's the entire city has to work on this budget, and I just really impressed with the budget this year, and I think it looks really good. So thanks to you and all the other people behind the scenes, all the management assistants, all those folks that helped put this together. So thank you. I know in the community development, they've been hit particularly hard with the permits and the growth in our community. And I just was wondering if that was looked at as far as staffing? Because I don't -- it didn't look like they got -- they received as much as they were asking for in community development. I just was wondering if you can speak to that at all?
Mayor and Council, I think I'd have to turn that over to Ms. Shelley Siler to answer any specific programmatic questions, if that's okay.
Sure, that'd be great.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Shelley Siler, I'm the interim Community Development Director. So we did ask for some positions throughout the department, one in code enforcement that was funded as one-time. Now I'm -- thank you. I'm going to go to the ones that weren't funded so I can specifically answer your questions. So the only position that we actually didn't get funded was Planner 1-2. And when Mark and Tom asked us to look at reductions, what I did was looked at offsetting recurring with one-time funding. So what I -- what we asked for was one-time funding for inspections, additional funding for plan review services. So whenever we have an influx of plan review, we can go to third-party consultants who help us address those shortages. And then--
How much -- just curious, how much does that cost to go outside?
Our request is $225,000. I can tell you, we have not used all of it. It just is there as kind of an emergency fund for us.
Okay.
I don't have the specific cost.
That's okay. It's okay, Shelley.
We can certainly get that to you.
Okay, just curious. Okay.
And then, again, we requested that the Deputy Community Development Director for Building Safety, that position was frozen two years ago, and we asked for that to be unfrozen as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I think that's all I have for you. I have a few more things. What about the frozen positions? We've had folks on temporary details for years now, and I'm just wondering what we're doing to address that. And maybe this is directed more at the city manager, but I do want to get these positions permanent. So what are we doing in that realm?
I'm sorry, Councilmember, are you talking about in a specific department or citywide?
Just citywide.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. You know, in previous budget years, especially coming out of the recession, we would often ask departments to kind of choose between whether or not we would want to incur a recurring cost or a one-time cost. Actually, I think what Shelley described is similar to what had been guiding us in the past. Part of that is sort of a hedge against potential recession so that we aren't cutting FTEs and we're instead flexing up in staffing with temporary employees when necessary. But your point is well taken. There are situations, and you mentioned one in Water, which is a little bit different because that's a different fund, but where people have been working in temporary capacities. I have asked departments in the past, and I'll continue to ask, when there are opportunities and when it makes sense for your budget to take a permanent -- a temporary position that has been there for a number of years, to your point, and it makes sense in your budget, to then create that as a permanent position, that they do so. So I think they've gotten the message in years past, and I should say, especially in this budget year, that that is something that we would look favorably upon if the budget otherwise permits for that to happen.
Okay, yes. I just don't think it's fair to make employees be in temporary positions for, you know, two years plus and/or eight years, whatever the case may be. Can we put a timeframe, like a six-month timeframe on that, Andrew? So if they are in temporary assignment, or not temporary assignment, but temporarily, you know, working in a position to make it more permanent within six months, just to be fair to the employees?
I hear what you're saying. There are some caveats. If we were to take a position that's budgeted as temporary in the budget year, let's say day one, July 1 of a budget year, and then six months in, if we don't have the funding capacity to create a recurring cost, we'd have to come back and ask for a mid-year supplemental. So typically, we would avoid that. What I would say is that there should be some metric to look at whether or not a position ought to remain as a temporary position. I think it's fair to say that the needs of departments can vary depending on department to department. A lot of temporary positions are in community services, for instance, because that work tends to be seasonal. And we wouldn't make FTEs out of lifeguards.
I understand that.
We look at pools. So some, you know, you look at that, and you say you wouldn't do it in that situation because the temporary work is actually rather short. I will say that one of the things that we did in March, April of 2020, when we were looking at a very steep recession, that we suspended all of the temporary positions that we could. That was an immediate budget decision that we could make that prevented us from having to consider, for instance, layoffs of FTEs during that very sharp V-shaped recession that we experienced middle of 2020. So there are sort of countervailing principles at stake when you look at a temporary position. I would agree with you as a general rule, if a position goes from one budget area to another, and it looks like we're treating them like they're permanent and we're not actually making it permanent, then we should have a mechanism in our budget system to trigger a conversation with that department to say, are you at a place where you either need the position, should restaff it, reimagine it, or ask for an FTE? So I think there's sort of a palette of options that ought to be triggered at some point.
I like that idea, that after a while, you know, you have a means to move forward. And I wasn't talking about the community services. I --
Understood. Yeah, I was just --
Professional.
For the benefit of kind of creating that context of how we look at the spectrum of it. But you're talking about people who work alongside other FTEs. They look like they're permanent, but they're still under that temporary status.
Exactly.
And that can create some equity issues that we're aware of over time. So point well taken.
Okay, great. Thank you for explaining that. Also, solid waste. You know, we've had a lot of problems with our garbage throughout this last year, and I know a lot of it was due to COVID. But are we increasing those positions?
Mayor, members of the council, one of the big issues was frankly turnover. Turnover, our drivers going to other cities. We've done some adjustments to entice the solid waste drivers in particular to stay. We've also proceeded down the path of getting into a contract to backfill with temporary help, contracted services, if you will, only if it's needed, only if it's needed. It's just an emergency situation. Also, I can tell you Tara Ford has done a phenomenal job of making sure every container every day is picked up. When there are issues, we had a slight issue last week, I believe, and she was on it the next day.
Okay.
So we heard it, and we do everything in our power to where that doesn't happen again.
Great. Thank you very much. Also, I'm very excited about the stormwater. I know I've heard about the houses being flooded for the last four years, and so I'm just really, really happy about us moving forward. And good job getting Scottsdale to finally cooperate with us. So that's excellent. So good. The PQI, that's really impressive that we're going to increase it to 68 million of our pavement management. That's super important to the residents of Tempe. And I'm excited that we're also looking at the residential streets and getting some of those up and just really keep moving towards our 70 goal. So thank you for that. I think that's a thank you to Shelley and company also, whoever's out there with that. And the BEST program, I know it wasn't funded, and I was just wondering if you could explain that a little bit more, what you were asking for with the BEST program?
Sure. Mayor members of the council, what we were asking for is recurring funding for the BEST program. As City Manager Ching talked about, if there's not recurring budget available, we will absorb that in our recurring funding when there's vacancies and things. We feel like we have adequate capacity. We are not stopping that program in this fiscal year. You may see this recurring supplemental request next year.
Can you explain the BEST program to folks that maybe don't understand it?
Sure. Mayor members of the council, BEST program is where we have hire challenged individuals to come and help with our services. I can tell you Charlie Blaydean has embraced that program, and you all know Charlie. He's a quality individual and in great success. We rely heavily on these BEST employees, and they're phenomenal employees.
And do we have like a timeframe where they become permanent employees after they maybe serve us for a while?
Sure. Mayor members of the council, as positions come open, we encourage them to apply, absolutely.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. That answers all my questions. Quite impressive. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Adams. Councilmember QB handed me something. She had to run off and do something. I think she'll be back in a little bit. But one thing she just asked was she wanted to recommend that we cut the additional $187,000 for the Super Bowl promotion. She said Tempe Tourism is already getting $300,000, which amounts to a 50% increase. And she's like, oh, she's -- oh, no, she's not. I thought this -- people are behind me, and I'm just like, you know. So Kara, I almost promoted you to councilmember a second ago, so. Is it a promotion, though? Is it? I mean, you know, depends on the day you ask me, so. Well played, Councilmember Aronado-Savage. And she was saying that she wanted the 100 -- she was recommending the $187,000 be cut for the purpose of taking that money and funding the energy equity position and converting the landscaper position that Kim Gaffney-Lowes was talking about to a full-time. So that was what her recommendations were.
That got taken care of.
Oh, right. Yes.
The landscaper was taken care of, right?
So yeah, the landscape position's being taken care of. But yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I got her comments in. Let's see. Any other councilmembers, any comments or questions on the presentation? Councilmember Garland?
I was writing my notes.
Oh.
I was writing my notes. Man, I was writing my notes. Okay, so I love the work that you guys put into your budget, and it is amazing to me how much work goes into this, not just with our staff, but with participation from the community also. The thing that I didn't think about, what I would suggest that you take out of in the green for something that I'd like to suggest, but as Councilmember QB had mentioned, or that Cory mentioned for her, you know, we have the -- I gotta find the line that it was on. We have the sustainability resilience. We have the equity, energy equity program that's in the green that is being funded, and it's number 96. It would seem logical that the position, the specialists that would be working with that position would actually be in the green also. If we're going to have the program, it would be nice to have the person that would be specifically looking at that program. So -- and that's line 22 that's in the red. And I, again, I'm not making any suggestions on what needs to be removed, but I do think that that might be one that would be nice to be brought back up to the -- again, that's just my suggestion or my thought. The other one is, you know, I marked a few of them on here that were in red just because I keep thinking about what we could do to continue to make sure that our employees are healthy and safety, are safe. And one of them is in the red on line 11. It's the Fire, Medical Rescue, Mental Health, and Wellness Program. That's one that I think is, again, is I think is an important thing to do to make sure that our employees are healthy, so that they're the ones out serving our community and making sure that the community is healthy. It goes along the same lines on -- I can't find this other number. Number 14 and 15, specifically looking at the middle school youth specialist. And I know that's an awful lot of money that's sitting there that's not up in the green. But I look at that as we, you know, we talk about how bad COVID has been and how much these students have really suffered. It's not just the high school older kids that are suffering, but it's the younger kids that are suffering also. So I like that. I'd like to see if there's a possibility of moving that around also, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Aronado-Savage.
Great. Councilmember Garland, what are you going to move out of the -- what are you going to move out of the green?
I'm leaving that up to you.
Oh. You know what? I just want to say, I mean, I feel like we've come such a long way. I want to say the first year that I was on the council, it was awful. It was terrible. And it was so hard to just try to hang on and maintain things and to really be in a position to see such a healthy organization and just a great appreciation to our staff that I think has really got us to where we are today and been through a lot of rough patches, a lot of rough patches. And I know COVID definitely kind of just threw us for a loop a little bit, but I always think that, you know, we come back stronger, we come back together, and I'm certainly grateful for that. And I -- people probably don't realize the evolution of the budget, too, of how we used to process the budget and where we are today and how transparent we are, how inclusive we are. And-- we are, and how much time and energy is really spent. So you have three individuals here, you know, presenting today, but there is a lot that really goes into this budget. So these guys are amazing, so thank you to you three. I love the fact that Wydel, you're here and we're continuing talking about how we're aligning with our priorities, our strategic plan. I mean, I don't know how long it took us to get there, but we did and we're talking about it, and I think that's so important, so we really can have that transparency and see how we are growing in those different areas, the ones that we want to accelerate or just, you know, the ones that we know are important to our community. So it has just been really remarkable to see the, the transformation of where we are, and it's nice to be in a place where it's fairly healthy, and a great thank you and appreciation to our department heads, because I know it's, it's tough. I mean, you wanna advocate for your department and the things that you do, and everybody is important, every position is important, every, every dollar of resources is important, but I know that you all have respect for each other, respect for what different, what the different departments do, and I'm really hopeful as we come out of this, the pandemic, and we come back to the offices and, and we get back to that synergy and that energy that I think that we have as a one organization, I really am looking forward to that, to seeing that. And just a couple of things I wanted to point out too is, is it was so nice to see the line item for the ambulance service. I know Chief Reese is out there somewhere, right? He's probably not paying attention, but I'm gonna call him out anyway. For, you know, for him to bring up that idea for us to have our own ambulance service and to do it for all the right reasons was basically just to provide the most outstanding customer services that we can to our residents, knowing that this was the way to go, but then to actually see the financial benefit from that, that is pretty doggone remarkable. So, you know, thank you for those that have implemented, that brought that idea forward. And then Keith, to actually see the golf fund in the black for maybe like the very first time, you know? Craig, thank you guys so very much for that because that hasn't happened in like ever. So that's pretty, pretty remarkable, and if you guys aren't golfers, if you, if you have a chance to get out there, they look phenomenal. The golf courses are in great shape and everybody speaks so highly of them. So, I, you know, it's just, it's just really great to see us be in a really good place, and we always hate to see red, right? So I was kind of really bummed to, to see a little bit of red, and, and I never wanted to say like, let me tell you what needs to go here and what needs to come out, because I feel like this has been vetted so thoroughly. You guys have worked really, really hard, addressed all of our questions, all of the things that we've heard from the public, you know, doing our best to really try to make a dent and a difference. And there are a couple of things though too on that list, and I, I agree with a couple of my colleagues in regards to, you know, what we're doing with our middle school youth specialist. I would love to somehow, I know Joel and I had an opportunity to meet with the superintendent, and, and he feels fairly confident that there's some dollars out there that hopefully we'll be able to find. So not necessarily have that go away, but maybe really just seek funding to try to figure out a way that we can get that financed this next year and then put it into a recurring line item like we did our youth specialist at the high schools. I mean, we talk about temporary positions and they were temps for a pretty long time, and it took us a while, about three years, to actually make them permanent. So that's super exciting to see that happen, and I don't want to be too greedy and say make it work, but I just feel like, I think there is enough people that believe in the youth specialist and the value that they have with our students and our young people that we should be able to figure out how to make that work. And if it is, you know, working with the school district a little bit more, you know, sitting in front of him and his staff, I think that's what we really should do to try to definitely make that happen. So I just, just wanna say thank you guys also very much for your, for your work. It's been pretty amazing, it's been a great evolution of a budget, it's kind of nice to know that maybe this will be the last time I have to worry about this budget. Just saying. But it has just been really great to work with, you know, the ultimate professionals that are right here today and out there in the audience, and just a really great organization that continues to care and really do the right thing, and the way things are aligned, I just really hope that, I know I'm really proud, I hope our residents are just as proud too. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Rarado Savage. I think you're done, but I'm still gonna call you for budget recommendations once you're not here. Don't try to block my number. Any other councilmembers, any additional comments? Councilmember Devar.
Just a real quick and then tag along on this. And first, yeah, thank you for this. I mean, it's outstanding, when we got here in 2008, I think Cory, it was, it was red, and then figure out the green, it was very thin, but the process has been tremendous. I want to also say that because of what we've done in Tempe, because of what we've done with the lake, because of what we've done with the buildings and what we've brought into this city, because how unique Mill Avenue is and the characteristics of what it brings in, you can go on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and it's just happening, you know, with not an event happening going on. But that's a, a contribution not to this council, but council before us and development within this area. All this stuff that we have done here has made these things possible. I know there's a lot of cities out there that do, would love to fund some of the positions that we're talking about, would love to just quickly, easily, let's make this guy a full-time, and we can do it. But it's because of what we did in Tempe, and there's still more to do within this area, but I'm just telling you, it's, it's a big thanks to what we're trying to strive here in Tempe and the uniqueness that we have a college town, we have a city, and we have everything like residents enjoy within 142 square miles. So anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Devar. Any other councilmembers, any additional comments?
So just a couple of quick things on my end. I really appreciate all the comments that have been made here. I, I agree, I mean, I would love to see if there is some way that we can do those middle school youth specialists, I think that's a really critical position, a critical position for all the reasons that my colleagues stated, so I'd love to see, you know, if there's a way to get that done potentially. And I recognize that, you know, those are tough decisions, you'll, you know, you can bring back some of those numbers and the council may have to make some decisions to reorder some things to make it work, so, but I would love to see an analysis of that and see if we could do it. The energy equity position as well, I agree, a couple of councilmembers made that point, and I also concur that that would be a really important position. I think that when it comes to accelerating a lot of our sustainability efforts, making sure that we're doing it through an equity lens, I think that is critical, so I'd like to see if we can find a way on that one. Appreciate what Councilmember Garland said about the Fire, Medical Rescue, Health and Wellness Program as well, would love to see some conversation about that. And then I know there was a position that was talked about by one of the speakers, and this might be, it might be a question for Paul Bentley, but I'll just ask about the, kind of the crisis response position that was unfunded potentially. I wanted to know, do we know exactly what that, what that dollar amount would be for the sake of the crowd and for those walking, watching at home? Or Paul, maybe you can come, talk about what that position actually, I'm sorry, I was, I was trying to avoid bringing it back up, but I figured I had to do it, so.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Paul Bentley, Deputy Human Services Director. The crisis intervention specialist position that, that had not been funded in the upcoming budget processes towards the mental health response team. And so that original proposal, as it was, was discussed, is intended to be a team of four, and through the support of mayor and council, we currently have three positions that were funded over this last year. And so three, so the hiring process has been done, and those three individuals are, are in the training process. The final position is this one here in order to complete what was the original ask. Within that budget process, the decision was is that the current crisis response van, the 24-hour, seven-day-a-week response van, in order to help support that further and to ensure that it's up and running consistently throughout, you know, throughout the year, that that position took priority at this point in time to make sure that that was happening in the upcoming budget process, and then we would come back to the table for the My Heart position in upcoming year.
Sounds good. What is the, what's the dollar amount associated with that fourth, uh, fourth position?
Uh, the, the dollar amount is about $88,412.
Okay. Um, you know, just I wanted to just quickly look around with council, is it okay that we at least explore the option of adding that fourth position to complete the ask? I understand that we may not be able to do it, but.
Explore away.
Explore away, all right. Cory, the, Cory the explorer, so.
Thank you, mayor and council.
I, I probably, I probably owe some copyright infringement money right now. Paul, thank you so much, appreciate it. Thank you. Other than that, that was all I had. I'm gonna go back to Councilmember QB since she's returned.
Thank you, thank you. I'm so sorry to have left, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for representing my position, but I just wanted to reiterate that, that number, item five, $187,742, the Super Bowl Committee, keep in mind that we have $300,000 from Tempe Tourism that's going to the Super Bowl, if the Super Bowl happens, because there's a movement to, to boycott not have a Super Bowl come to Arizona because of the anti-LGBTQ legislation that has passed and been signed by the governor. So it's even in doubt, there's a lot, lot, AG Montini wrote about it, and there's a lot happening on that issue. But we already, as a city, through bed tax, are giving $300,000, which is a 50% increase beyond what we gave the last Super Bowl, and this has just added things like, you know, having VIP, VIP status, you know, for the city, you know, to me, it doesn't add a lot. And so we can have a little further discussion about it, but $187,000 is a chunk of change that would help to fund that energy equity position, to fund that fourth position that you're discussing. So I, I know this was mentioned, but I want to just reiterate that, that I would like to look at that more, more closely.
So I would say, thank you, Councilmember QB, for that. I was gonna say as well, so yeah, definitely, you know, I think there's support to move forward with looking to fund that energy equity position, but I also wanted to say too, I'd like to just see if we can chat with the Tempe Tourism Office as well, you know, Michael Martin, who's their interim CEO, just to see, here's perspective, I totally understand what you're saying, the 300%, you know, kind of represents a 50% increase, and there's some concern, that $187,000 is not a small amount of money. And so I understand, so I totally get that, but I would just love to get also kind of a recommendation from him to see what he's thinking from the tourism office too.
And so, you know, I did speak with him, and I don't want to represent what he said, but I did speak with him, and yes, I would love to get that more officially known about his position. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. Definitely happy to explore it, though, and very good point, so, absolutely. Any other councilmembers, any additional comments?
So Mayor, if I could, I heard crisis response, I heard consensus on bringing crisis response to, excuse me, it's getting late.
It's getting late, don't worry.
On, on what we can do to fund crisis response, is that something you would like us to bring back on May, is it the 6th, I think, May the 6th or 7th, as a follow-up item? Or if we're able to fit it in, you know, there's no reason to come back to talk about one item if we're able to kind of figure out a way to fit it in. And, and I didn't hear consensus on anything else. I got, I got the, the ask to look at the, to do an analysis of the middle, middle school youth specialist, but as far as bringing anything back, the, what I heard consensus on was the, the crisis response position.
Maybe we can do, just, just for, you know, for Claire, we can go down the list, just so we can, so let's go to, Tom, if you want to, you have a list in front of you as to what was said?
I do. I heard middle school youth specialist, and I don't know what the dollar amount is on those, and what I heard was an analysis on that, bring back.
Analysis.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, Councilwoman Vice Mayor Keating?
I mean, I don't want to see analysis of, of all this before I say, yeah, thumbs up or thumbs down on any new positions.
Okay, absolutely. Okay. So, does the council feel differently about the crisis intervention specialist, about just funding that, or would you like to bring all of that back as part of the analysis packet? All back? Okay, I'm fine, I'm fine with that. Okay. Yep.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, just wanna make sure that Tom and I have the same items. One is the Fire, Medical Rescue, Mental Health and Wellness Program. You'd mentioned that. To bring back, the middle school youth specialist, bring back, energy equity position, okay, crisis intervention specialist, and then the Super Bowl contribution, do we have consensus to bring that back?
Uh, yes, I mean, just for, for analysis sake, for all of them, yes, I would agree. Tom, anything else in your list that we missed?
No, no sir, got them all, thank you.
So yes, we will bring all of those items back for kind of further dollar analysis to see what we want to do, and I guess you said, you know, May 6th or 7th, one of those dates, I'm not looking at my calendar right now, but it's in a couple of weeks, so, everybody good?
And their consensus direction is that everything else is okay as it is?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Mr. Mayor, just real quick, just, they call it the City Manager's Recommended Budget, but it doesn't happen without the work of everybody you see here, and a lot of people you don't, and I just want to express my appreciation for the staff and the hard work they did to get to where we are today. This has been a really good, strong team collaborative effort, and, and I really think, especially with Tom kind of being inserted into that as an interim, a deputy city manager, as we already were beginning to mobilize on this, and not, not missing a beat between him and the rest of the staff, just great work, thank you.
Absolutely. Way to jump in with both feet, Tom. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number four is called to the audience. So the next item is called to the audience for committee of the whole items. There are no items ready for city council direction. Moving on here to item number five, let's see, anything here? Anyone, does anyone want to give an update on anything here? Item's 5B, council committee is in progress, human services and community safety, sustainable and livable communities, and workforce readiness and economic vitality. Does anyone want to give an update on their committee? Pretty good?
Well, that's true. I wouldn't need to say that.
Okay. All right, nothing, nothing there, I'll go ahead and close that. Next item on the agenda is future agenda items. Councilmembers may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. In accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Are there any future agenda items council would like to have added? Yes, Councilmember QB?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three years ago, we passed the ADU ordinance, which expanded ADU opportunities for our residents in, in multi-use family zones, and then we also expanded or reduced the amount of space for guest houses. You didn't have to have like a 20,000 foot square foot property, it could be 8,000 square foot property. So I would, we were supposed to do a yearly review of that, and it hasn't happened, probably because of COVID, but it's been three years, so maybe it's a time to look at the ADU ordinance, see if it's been effective, see if there's ways to expand it, and, you know, hear back from community development.
I see Councilmember Devar nodding, I, I totally agree as well. I see Councilmember Adams nodding as well, so yeah, let's definitely, let's definitely bring that back for a future agenda item. Any other councilmembers, future agenda items you'd like to request?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes, thank you. So I'm continuing to get complaints from residents about the speeding, drag racing on our streets, people getting hit on bicycles, walking, getting hit, and I would like us to revisit Vision Zero as a result. I just think that we have to, we have to do something to try to control the speeding and dangerousness in our community.
Absolutely. No, I think we can definitely add that to a future agenda as well. I know probably a lot of folks have seen the, some of the safety corridor signs that are going up all around the community, you know, basically saying safety corridor and strict enforcement in this zone, and so I think that's been a great first step to raise awareness and to let people know that speeding is not something we want you to do, so, but, but we can definitely have that added to a future agenda.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Adams. Any other items people would like to have add? Okay, I don't have any either. All right, next item on the agenda, mayor's announcements and city manager's announcements. I have one announcement, but I wanted to turn to Vice Mayor Keating first, I know he has one, and then I will read a separate proclamation that's totally separate and apart afterwards, but Vice Mayor Keating.
Well, before, Mayor, I wanna, I wanna echo your very brave stance that speeding is bad.
Thank you.
And I don't care who knows, that's how I feel.
You know, I'm a very daring guy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, as anyone who has gotten, uh, any emails over the last months and weeks, you know, the Shady Park issue in Tempe is really, you know, it's really grown to a lot of proportions, so, you know, as you know, I wanted to kind of put my thoughts down and, and, you know, kind of say where I'm at publicly on this issue, and then of course invite, you know, all of my colleagues, if you guys want to join me in signing a letter that I intend to send both to Shady Park Management and Mirabella Management as well. So I know you've all gotten copies of this letter in advance, not on Twitter, I'm sorry, Councilmember Garland. But, so I'll read it into the record, and then I will invite you to, if you, if you wanna join me, then I would invite that. So, all right, here it goes. "To the Tempe Arts and Community Culture, as members of your Tempe City Council, we wish to publicly express our strong support for our city's live music venues. Tempe has, for many years, placed a high value on live music as a driver of a thriving arts and culture community. Since 2015, Shady Park has contributed greatly to Tempe's reputation as the valley's live music capital. Equally important, Shady Park has been a consistent force for good in Tempe's downtown as an employer, by feeding the homeless on a weekly basis, and contributing hundreds of thousands of dollars to local nonprofits who serve individuals and families in need across our city and region. Unfortunately, a ruling made by AmeriCopa County's Superior Court Judge on April 12th calls into question the future of this local institution, and very well could have a chilling effect on live music across our city. This ruling has the potential to cost many employees their jobs and rob the city of Tempe of an economic and cultural asset. The judge's ruling casts doubt on Tempe's ability to thoughtfully regulate and promote live music throughout our city. Furthermore, we are concerned about the precedent of substituting a judge's opinion on a matter of local concern, instead of allowing us, the elected officials, to determine the best policies for our community as a whole. To be sure, each of us has an abiding respect for the residents of Mirabella, which opened up in December of 2020. The city, the city of Tempe prides itself on being a community where all are welcome and where people are accepted as they are. As council members, we believe every Tempe resident should be able to enjoy a peaceful environment in their home, no matter the hour, and get a good night's sleep. With that said, we also believe that live music venues like Shady Park, that have operated for years in the Mill Avenue District, should be able to coexist and thrive with downtown's many permanent residents. It is our understanding that Shady Park intends to appeal this preliminary injunction. We hope that it, we hope that this local business can be preserved and that live music venues, which contribute so much to Tempe's culture, will be able to continue to add to our city's quality of life and economy. We appreciate all the public feedback we have received on this issue, and we hope the situation can be resolved to the satisfaction of all concerned and in full compliance with applicable laws." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mayor.
Madam City Attorney, yes, please.
I apologize, Mayor. I, I need to interject a couple of comments here. This matter is not on the agenda tonight. We've actually declined to accept reading any speaker cards for, for Shady Lane discussion. Therefore, I need to ask the council, Mayor and Council, Vice Mayor, to not discuss the letter or your feelings toward the letter, because this is not on the agenda. What you can do, Mayor and, and members of council, is you can indicate to Vice Mayor Keating if you wish to sign off on this letter.
Okay. So you're basically, so you're basically saying, no, no discussion, but you can indicate if we want to, if individuals wanna sign the letter, so, yeah, we can, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Sounds good. Okay, Councilmember Adams.
So I will be signing that letter. Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating, for bringing it forward. Good job.
Thank you. And please, I'm sorry, we can't, we can't have any clapping, I'm sorry, just make sure I follow the council rules, but I appreciate it. No worries, no worries. Okay, any other councilmembers? Councilmember DeVarre?
I'll definitely be supporting that letter.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember DeVarre. Councilmember Redondo-Savage.
Absolutely. Very happy to be supporting Vice Mayor's letter. Thank you for taking the initiative.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Garland?